I like to call this Tampa City Council Public Hearing for the Budget to Order. Today is September 3rd, 5:01 PM. Roll call, please.
Viera.
Here.
Goode.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Dingfelder.
Here.
Citro.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
Maniscalco.
Here. All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Shelby, if you'd like to begin?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the Tampa City Council. Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney. Because of the COVID-19 state of emergency, this public hearing of the Tampa City Council is being held in accordance with the Declaration and provisions of Governor's Executive Order Number 20-179 and City Council Resolution Number 2020-225, and is amended by Resolution Number 2020-490. It is being conducted by audio teleconferencing with video presentations, remote or electronic participation, which is referred to by the State of Florida statutes as communication media technology. The public and the citizens of the city of Tampa are able to watch, listen, and view this meeting on cable TV, on Spectrum and Frontier, and through the Internet. And since this meeting is being conducted with the use of communication media technology, the following alternative methods have been established for members of the public to offer public comment this evening during the public meeting: on the Internet or web, by use of voicemail and recorded comments, by written comments sent into City Council, and to speak remotely during public comment during the public hearing, as well as providing comments in person for those individuals who do not have access to a communications media technology device, and that is available to them this evening at the Tampa Convention Center. Mr. Chairman, I turn the meeting back to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to open both public hearings for the operating and capital budgets? Do I have a motion?
No motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda with a second from Councilmember Goode. We could have a roll call vote on that?
Viera.
Yes.
Goode.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dingfelder. Dingfelder.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. Mr. O'Hara, CFO for the city? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir. Will the Finance Chair please read the first public hearing statement?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. O'Hara. This is the first public hearing for the city of Tampa's Budget 2021 Budget. The proposed millage rate of 6.2076 mils, which is 5.58% more than the rollback millage rate of 5.8797 mils, property tax funds are used to support the general front operating budget for the city. This fund includes such departments as fire rescue, police, human resources, parks, and recreation.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. O'Hara, if you'd like to proceed with your presentation, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could I have the presentation on screen, please?
Mr. Chair, could I say something real fast?
Go ahead.
I, just for the public watching, I think all these brands are confusing. We got this presentation about an hour ago, and just, just in case I thought I was wrong, I Googled Lift Up Local, and, and, and the way it was, that program or that brand was announced, it was about the economic recovery program for restaurants and bars, and it says that on the website. And I just want to make sure the public watching is not confused that we're not, we're not talking about the budget for that program right now. We're talking about the budget for the whole city, unless I'm wrong. Maybe Mr. O'Hara can, can explain. Thank you.
Yes, sir. This is Dennis. Yes, Lift Up Local is also the theme for the fiscal year 21 budget in its entirety. And that's what we'll be presenting.
Yeah, I just think it's very confusing, all these, one Tampa, Lift Up Local, all this stuff. It's, I think it's confusing the public. I think we should just say, you know, it's the year, it's the annual budget. Sorry, thank you.
All righty. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Mr. O'Hara, if you'd like to begin.
Thank you, sir. Next slide, please. Thank you. I'll start with a brief review of our strategic plan and goals, and stress that they speak to an emphasis on long-term planning, even as we address the short-term challenges of which we're all too aware. Next slide, please. And here are the strategic goals of the plan. On the far left, strengthening community-centric services with an emphasis on action in the neighborhoods and community. And you see in that last check mark, it's all about connection. Moving to the right, enhancing workforce development. First and foremost, being part of a community collaborative with all participants in this area, whether government, nonprofit, private, et cetera. Moving on, increasing housing affordability. And, oh, I'm sorry, moving on to the right of that slide, thank you. Right at the top, an ambitious goal to add 10,000 units by 2027. Again, collaboration and partnership, including state and federal funding. Continuing moving to the right, improving infrastructure and mobility. As you know, we've hit the ground running on infrastructure with our $3 billion 20-year pipes project. All the way to the far right, establishing sustainability and resiliency, with again, an emphasis on neighborhoods and collaboration. We are aggressively addressing stormwater management. We're developing a climate action and resilient plan, and as you know, we just hired our first sustainability and resiliency officer. And at the bottom of the slide, the glue that binds it all together, a continuing emphasis on conservative fiscal management and strong fund balances and reserves. Next slide, please. And the budget development process. Council, as you know, over time, this has become a nearly year-long process, and we've arrived at a carefully crafted and extensively discussed and transparent budget in the midst of a global pandemic. And you see on these next slides the many steps and milestones along the way. Reviewing prior year performance, as you know, we won't know how this year turned out until months after you've adopted next year's budget. You see extensive briefings with the mayor and her leadership and reviews of requests. Next slide. We provided you with a mid-year update, and the Citizens Budget Review Committee began its many meetings with city leadership and departments, and we start assimilating various data. We met with each of you and have had a workshop, and again, more data and decisions. Next slide, please. We presented the recommended budget to you, conformed with the detailed and stringent truth and millage process, and here we are. Next slide, please. And here, as you know, is the recommended budget, $1.2 plus million. The increase compared to the current year, as we've discussed, is primarily due to things such as expansion of our utilities, capital project programs, negotiated labor contracts, additional staffing to support parks and recreation programs, and emergency services. Next slide, please. And the adopted budget by the two primary groups, general fund expenditures and enterprise funds. We've discussed these before, the major enterprise funds, and of course, the major portions of the general fund. Next slide, please. And again, the general fund utility services tax forecast. As we've discussed, conditions being what they are, we're going to have to use a bit of our fund balance in the current year, but we're going to more than make that up in fiscal year 21, maintaining what we consider that very, very important 23% fund balance. Next slide. And again, a brief, relatively brief history of our fund balance. We consider this very successful, hovering around 24%, 23%. Again, our policy is 20%. We are well in excess of that, and as you can see, as the budget increases, the amount of funding to maintain those percentages in the fund balance also increases. Next slide, please. And our capital improvement program, again, an emphasis on infrastructure, infrastructure, and infrastructure, major, major projects in stormwater, wastewater, water, to a total of almost $1.4 million over the next five fiscal year period. Next slide, please. And the second public hearing council will occur Wednesday, September 16th, 2020. Thank you. That ends my presentation.
All right.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Mr. O'Hara, for that. I just wanted to make a comment to Mr. O'Hara's presentation when he was talking about the, the fund balance and the reserves and the policy that you recall from his presentation about our high bond rating, you know, that the 23% has been a staple for that for some time. And, and I don't know, Dennis, if you want to further comment on that?
Certainly, I can add a little color to that. You know, we look at our fund balances not only in the general fund, but across our funds, and you'll recall the recent upgrade we had in our water, wastewater pipes debt issuance because of the strong, in part because of the strong fund balances. We tend to concentrate on the general fund balance because that is reliant heavily on property taxes and is the funding source that we can spend on anything we want. When we talk to the rating agencies and when we go out for debt service, they will look at the particular issuance, but they'll also look at the city from a broad-based perspective with, with much emphasis on that general fund unallocated fund balance. Our policy of 20% is very, very good. The fact that we consistently and considerably exceed it is well received by credit rating agencies and puts us in a stronger financial position.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else? If not, we will go to, any questions or comments from council members? Are there any comments or questions at this time?
The only comment I'm going to make is Miranda, is that Mr. O'Hara touched on the credit and the money that we set at 23% for financial responsibility for the future. And the term, I guess, as we're doing the budget for 2021 with a look into the future and that bond rating is very, very important, because the lower the bond rating, the more you pay on interest, the less you can get done with the same amount of money. That's my statement. Thank you, Dennis, and thank the administration for the work they've done.
Thank you very much. Any other council members at this time?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman, Councilman Goode, go ahead.
I had talked to Chief of Staff and our financial officer in relation to public perception. You know, we've had several emails and calls in reference to excessive of a $13 million increase. I was just hoping, they gave me an explanation. I kind of, first off, a little bit with my thoughts on where that increase is and why that is. And I'm just hoping that we can get that explanation from our Chief of Staff or our CFO, so the public can know that we're just not giving a certain department 13 million extra dollars.
Yes, sir. This is Dennis again, and I can certainly speak to that. My presumption is you're referencing the increase in the police department budget. If you said that, I missed it, and I apologize. And we can break that, we can break that down into the major expenditures. Negotiated salaries and benefits of over $5 million contribute to that 13-plus million dollar increase. Again, we have agreed to, with the PBA, the IAFF, and the ATU, to three-year contracts. Pension increases based on a number of factors, including market return and actuarial calculations, contribute to five, over $5 million to that 13-plus million dollar increase. We have a one-time healthcare trust contribution of over $1 million associated with the PBA and the IAFF going and starting their own healthcare trust. Our body worn camera contract is over half a million dollars of that increase, and aviation maintenance associated with our helicopters is over half a million dollars.
Thank you, Chief. I just thought that the public should know, because there hasn't been a clear answer, and I just thought for transparency, the public should know that it's just not a $13 million, just giving a certain department 13 million increase, but the increase is because of salaries, pensions, and a healthcare plan that's new. And I just thank you for that, and hopefully the general public understands why that is.
Thank you very much. Any other council members? All right. I hear none. We now go to public comments. Madam Clerk, do we have people at TCC waiting, or no?
No, there is no one at Tampa Convention Center at this time.
All right. I see we have quite a few people at the list in front of me on the live callers that have signed up. If we could go to those first, and then we'll go to the recorded comment. Do you, are you timing it, or would you like me to time it?
If you could, that'd be awesome.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Martin Shelby here. Yes, just for the public, their understanding, I believe it's council's pleasure to take items one and two to be heard together. You opened both public hearings, and you're hearing them both together, so the comments reflect both items one and two. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. So we can keep it, you know, smooth.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right. Madam Clerk, if you'd like to begin with public comment, I'll have the timer here. Go ahead and begin.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The first speaker we have is Fran Tate. If you could hear me, please unmute your line. You have three minutes to speak.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Good evening.
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Awesome. Good evening. Thank you so much. As stated, I am Fran Tate, the president of Jackson Heights Neighborhood Association. I reside at 3405 Clay Street, Tampa 33605. Thank you for listening this evening. I have permission to speak on behalf of Jackson Heights, College Hill, Rainbow Heights Neighborhood Associations, as well as the East Hills Borough Neighborhood Watch. First of all, we want to thank our district councilman Orlando Goode for the proposal of the racial reconciliation resolution and the unanimous vote of our council members to pass this resolution. We feel it is surely time for us all to live together in peace, educating one another, forgiving each other, and respecting all, or we all are our brothers' keepers. Next, I want to comment on item agenda, agenda items one and two. The fiscal year 2021 budget. Seaplife Andrews Jr. Public Library is our newly renovated state-of-the-art library located at East Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard and North 26th Street. It serves our community not only as a library, but also as a place for community meetings and also a voting precinct. Since 2016, we have been asking and requesting a crosswalk and crosslight to be placed at that intersection. We feel that it is imperative that the public safety be addressed at this time. We're requesting council to add this public safety device to the budget for immediate installation. We must always be proactive, looking out for the public safety of our citizens and not reactive. Thank you so very much for receiving me. God bless you all.
Mr. Chairman, for privilege.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, for privilege.
Go ahead, Councilman Goode.
In reference to Mrs. Tate and all the neighborhood association presidents that are listening, we've already made that inquiry in reference to the light. I spoke to the mobility director. They've just got their final designs that EBDOT helped up because of the COVID-19. Now that design is in, they can start getting the work order in to get the steel to build the project. It's going to take a minute because steel is on back order a little bit, so it's going to take a minute for that steel to get in, and once that steel is here, the project will move forward, because that money's already been allocated by EBDOT, and EBDOT approved the city to work on the project. So it's going to take a little bit longer, maybe another six months maybe, but it is coming. So I want you to know that it is coming. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please.
Yes, the next speaker is Angel DeAngelo. If you can hear me, please unmute your line. You have three minutes to speak.
Go ahead.
Hi, this is Angel DeAngelo. I'm one of the organizers with the Sort of Justice Coalition and a born resident of Tampa, Florida. You know, we do all this work out of passion for the communities, for everyone that lives here, but most specifically the vulnerable communities, the black community, the Latinx community, disabled community, and transgender community, and of course, those that live at the intersections of those identities. We do this work out of passion. Nobody pays the Sort of Justice Coalition to be part of any of this. I go to work at a regular job. All of the other organizers go to work at a, at a regular job to do this. And a lot of this work, honestly, is work that US City Council could be doing, but you're not. And instead, you and Mayor Castor are claiming that you have no idea where we want the funds to go when we talk about reallocating from TPD. I understand that the money that's being added is regarding payroll and benefits, but when only about 17% of TPD is even Tampa residents, that does nothing for the average person here. It does not improve our economy. It does not give us jobs, and it doesn't get the fact that 19% of the city's population live at or below the poverty line, and 13% of the population has no healthcare access. So we did it for you. We surveyed the community to find out what they believe the priorities of this budget should be, and it certainly does not match Mayor Castor's budget. I'd like to remind City Council once again that you do not work for Mayor Castor, nor do you work for the Tampa Police Union or the Tampa Police Department. You work for us. Please consider this when you're using our money. We had 264 respondents out of the 322, so that's 82%, say they agree with reallocating fund from the police into the community. 85% want to see more mental health services, and 82% want to see youth engagement programs, with 82% asking for money be allocated to universal healthcare. All respondents were under the age, were 38 years of age or younger. We're calling for you to adjust this budget to put more money into the community. You can invest at least $4 million into a mental health responder program that is separate from TPD, and will take majority of nonviolent TPD calls. This will relieve stress from TPD, since I hear they're so overwhelmed and stressed out, so this will be great for them, and it will be great for the community. You can also use some money to study programs, programs like Kahoots in Eugene, Oregon, which, out of the 22,000 calls that they do, less than 150 had to result in police intervention, meaning that this department is able to handle majority of their calls without police intervention. And they take calls directly from 911. It only costs them about $2 million a year there, so a city of our population may be about $4 or $5 million. So I think you should put money into studying that, and you should study programs like violence interrupters. This reduces gun violence by 60% without using any type of prison or incarceration method. These things are...
Thank you very much, sir.
These things are...
Next speaker we have is Sharon Graham. If you can hear me, please unmute your line. You have three minutes to speak.
Hi, thank you.
Go ahead.
All right. My name is Sharon Graham, and I own a private practice here in Tampa, and we work throughout the city and surrounding areas. I've worked for over a decade with children and adults with emotional and behavior disorders, and both civilians and veterans with traumatic brain injury and PTSD in both inpatient and outpatient settings. I'm an informed advocate of restorative and equitable policy reform, and have led statewide legislative efforts regarding healthcare access since 2014. I am speaking to you today with grave concerns regarding our police department and its allocation of funding within our budget. These current policies of overpolicing neighborhoods of color, criminalizing the poor and houseless only exacerbate the social issues that we see. People lose jobs, cannot afford bail, reliable transportation, and lose much-needed money that should be applied toward rent and food. I am urging you to encourage the mayor to call for Chief Dugan's resignation. He has demonstrated an unfortunate lack of transparency, increased use of force, and most tragically, he has lost the confidence of the community he has sworn to serve. This is untenable. We must also demilitarize the police department and make them accountable to the community for their actions, including escalation, use of force, and negligence. We would like our city to divert the excess police funds into community needs, such as affordable housing, transportation, and... such as affordable housing, transportation, and healthcare. The current policies do not make us safer. The data are clear on this. When we invest in building up our community, we do not need punitive measures that are currently in place. More specifically, we would like at least one-hundred-and-forty-thousand to study programs like Kahoots and the Richmond Office of Neighborhood Safety, both of which invest in communities instead of punish them. At least four million into a mental health responder program that is not a part of the police department. At least thirteen million into housing to keep people housed and secure, which will automatically reduce crime. At least thirteen million into a city jobs program aiming to employ the houseless, those with felonies, those with disabilities, and others who are forgotten or marginalized. And then remaining amounts to fund a childcare voucher program so all children can access quality, locally neighborhood-owned childcare services. The status quo is unacceptable. Increasing the budget of the police department is unacceptable. We are calling on you to shift funds from the police into community investment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Yes, next speaker is Megan Thomas. If you can hear me, please unmute your line. You have three minutes.
All right, go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Go ahead. Yeah, we can. Go ahead.
Good evening, council members. My name's Megan. I'm a local community advocate calling in today to say that I do not support increasing the budget of TPD in the twenty-twenty-one plan. Tampa police officers are already receiving well above average salaries compared to other officers in the ten most populous cities in Florida. It's just unnecessary to pay them more when we could use that money to actually build up our communities, increase a safer and better quality of life for everyone in Tampa. There's this common misconception that if we hire more cops, pay them more, get them better equipment, train them better, then they are more likely to do their jobs better, and therefore, there will be less crime. But simply put, cops are not the cure for crime. Cops react to crime, and sometimes in lethal and unjust ways. One of the reasons Mayor Castor used as justification to not divest from the police department is that crime rates in Tampa have gone down, and that's awesome. Crime rates, that's awesome that crime rates have gone down, but research has already shown that there's no correlation between crime rates and increased spending on law enforcement. So this is certainly not a good reason to pour more city resources into this department. Despite this fact, TPD salaries have continually increased over the years anyway, along with things like excessive force used on community members from Tampa police officers. We can't keep doing the same things over and over again and expect a different result. Investing in TPD and even changing policies have not and will not lead to the outcomes we want to see in this community. A safer and more effective way that we can reduce crime long-term is through investing more into education, more into healthcare, more into affordable housing and community-based programs. Therefore, I'm encouraging all tonight to, instead of approving the full amount of the thirteen million dollar increase to TPD's budget, allocate this money towards legitimate forms of public safety. We've given you the facts. We've given you the figures, even suggested specific studies for you all to fund. We have the tools to do it, so what are we waiting for? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Ardisha Floyd. If you can hear me, please unmute your line.
Go ahead.
Hello. Hi, my name's Ardisha Floyd, and I'm a member of the People's Safety Coalition. Since last month, we've been demanding that you all do not approve this budget with a thirteen-million-dollar increase for TPD. We are calling for the City Council to freeze TPD's budget and reallocate nineteen percent of those funds to community-based interventions to violence. We are also calling for the City Council to call for the reduction of the jail population by reducing arrests for misdemeanor offenses by fifty percent to end the targeting of protesters and activists and to fire Police Chief Dugan. Mayor Jane Castor herself has said that the police are tasked with doing too much, yet her quote-unquote findings from her task force would require the police to take on even more tasks. Why do we need a police athletic league? Wouldn't just an athletic league also keep us just as safe? Let me answer that question for you. It would keep us just as safe, but it would not legitimize the police and give them more things to do in the process. If you think there needs to be a police athletic league, then maybe consider kids deserving an athletic league void of the police. The People's Safety Coalition ran a survey and got over three-hundred responses, and over eighty percent of those responses said that money needs to, more money needs to be allocated for more youth programs. Over eighty percent of those responses also said that money needs to be allocated for mental health services. We've discussed a Kahoots program with several of you, a mobile crisis intervention team that takes seventeen percent of the calls from the local police department. It costs two-point-one-million dollars to run annually, but saves the city an estimated eight-million dollars a year. Kahoots staff are not law enforcement officers and have been trained to ensure a non-violent resolution of crisis situations, which is because they're not law enforcement officers. Protesters, protests are already kicking off in Rochester as we speak because the police killed a person who was in a crisis, and studies estimate that anywhere from twenty percent to fifty percent of police calls are for people who are in crisis. So there is a great need for non-violent resolutions that keep people safe and alive. This coalition is calling for a feasibility study so we can determine the need for Kahoots program here. There needs to be money allocated for this feasibility study so that we can actually get this response team. There are other programs too, like violence interrupters, that have been shown by scientific studies to reduce violence without police presence. According to the book, Pacifying the Homeland, less than one-third of police work is actually crime-related. About eight out of ten incidents are not even considered criminal by the police themselves, and less than six percent of cops' time is spent on things that turn into criminal offenses. So why are we pretending that they do the work to reduce crime? We quite literally are the ones that keep us safe. We, the community, are the ones that are doing this work, and we are waiting for City Council to move of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Craig Fox. If you could hear me, please unmute your line.
Mr. Fox, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you, everybody. My name's Craig, and I'm a member of the People's Safety Coalition also. And one thing I want people to know is just that the reason why we're doing this is because we desperately need safety in our communities and it's not being addressed correctly by the current system. The times of experience gun violence are times that I've been like laying down in my bed as a kid or as an adult, just doing mundane things like being at my aunt's house or being at my grandmother's house. And when the criminal justice system fails us, it fails us holistically and increases the likelihood of those shootings happening within my community. So we desperately need this money reallocated to programs that are more effective of ending violence without having the fear, putting the fear of everybody, that if they call, that the friend's going through a mental crisis, that if they call nine-one-one, they might just get shot by the people coming to save them. That is a kind of trauma that I feel like people just don't really experience that much unless you're actually in the situation and you live in these communities. And only seventeen percent of our current police force even lives in the city of Tampa. And then on top of that, which area do those people even live in? Do they live in the richer areas or do they actually live in the lower-income areas? It's a totally different experience that you have when you're actually in these communities. So we're also demanding that some of these funds be reallocated to proven safety measures like violence interrupters, like Kahoots, but not only just in at these programs, but also hire the community directly. We also demand four million dollars for those programs to make them run, four million each. And then we also are demanding that the remaining, remainder funds that we're supposed to reallocate, which is nineteen percent of thirty-four million, be directed into a city job program because we all know that jobs reduce crime and poverty. We also need to relocate those into childcare services, and we also need to relocate more, even more funds into the housing as we are in the middle of a pandemic and people don't have access to secure housing. Counsel, I cannot stress enough just how badly and how urgent the need is for these safety programs. As a pandemic worsens and more unemployment occurs, only more violence is gonna occur in our communities. So we cannot accept this budget for what it is and how it stands today. We need to take direct, bold action, and since we live in unprecedented times of this pandemic, we need to take a precedent, a precedent move today and reallocate these things to things that we know will save our lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Next speaker is Zulema Ramos. If you can hear me, please unmute your line. You have three minutes to speak.
All right, go ahead.
Hello. Good evening, council. Thank you for hosting this meeting today. My name is Zulema Ramos, and I am a facilitator with the Tampa Bay Housing Justice Committee, a group of over a hundred-and-fifty, and I'm also one of your constituents. And right now, as other speakers have mentioned, so many residents are experiencing severe poverty and hunger during this COVID-nineteen health crisis. And we need, right now, food, not firearms, teachers, not tasers, housing, not handcuffs, and counselors, not cops. According to internal TPD reports, use of force under Police Chief Dugan has increased twenty-four percent, pepper spray use is up two-hundred-and-twenty-three percent, and there are illegal actions and protocol violations by TPD documented by legal observers from the ACLU and the National Lawyers Guild that resulted in injured children, families, medics, and journalists. And this is on top of the violence already seen in the Tampa community from TPD. And in light of this and the Tampa Police Department's history of discrimination that led to the unneeded deaths of Tampa resident Arthur Green Jr. and Jason Westcott, among others, we, the committee, are in full support of the reallocation of the police budget to necessities that actually reduce crime. We know from basic experience and dozens of years of study, we should put that money towards public transit, clean energy, houseless and disability-friendly public parks, free housing, food gardens, native plants. And we need to prioritize new programs like community violence interrupters that exist in other places and better support existing ones like at the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay. When I personally had a friend who was trying to commit suicide, I called the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay, not the cops, and he is alive today. On top of which, the Tampa community has been surveyed, and as a result, we are calling for universal childcare programs that can help working parents get quality care, starting with at least four million dollars and moving thirty-four million from the proposed TPD budget into things like equitable housing programs, city job programs, as well as programs that can make cops into actual residents in our city that hold jobs that help us. We could have training programs for them if they don't have other skills. We can make sure that with the dramatic shift in our priorities as a city, that we can truly be a place that stands for the safety and justice for everyone that lives here and everyone that visits here. So please...
Thank you very much.
Really, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Next speaker we have is Alexa Rotberg. If you can hear me, please unmute your line. You have three minutes.
Hi, I can hear you.
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
I'd like to voice my opposition to the mayor's fiscal year twenty-twenty-one recommended operating capital budget. I have to speak up against this egregious misallocation of funds proposed within the budget, and the fact that it's being passed off by the administration as a progressive strategic initiative seems misleading and unethical, to say the least. In the budget document, Major Castor describes a citywide strategy that focuses on providing a high level of service in housing, mobility, infrastructure, and workforce development. If this is Mayor Castor's goal, I'm confused as to where police fit into the strategy and where further investment in TPD is necessary, justified, or even appropriate, given TPD's recent actions in the community that have been caught on tape and circulated nationally. These actions have breached numerous civil rights and are casting Tampa in a light that is quite different than the inclusive, progressive city Mayor Castor promotes outwardly. It seems that if Mayor Castor's citywide strategy were really as comprehensive, inclusive as she claims, we would be investing in various other positions and departments, not TPD. No amount of funding will make a TPD officer a social worker, a mental health professional, a housing counselor, or an employment opportunity. No amount of TPD funding will make up for the historic neglect of minority neighborhoods throughout the city. What would help address the systemic issues prevalent throughout our city is funding the very departments Mayor Castor isn't touching: Development and Economic Opportunity, Equal Business Opportunity, Neighborhood and Community Affairs, and Planning and Development. TPD does not need thirteen million more dollars, let alone the hundred-and-sixty-two million they were allocated in twenty-twenty. In fact, many of the TPD systems currently in place, funded by taxpayer dollars and touted within the budget document, are failing certain members of the community as we speak. For example, in June twenty-twenty, a protester was hit in Hyde Park Village by a driver who then drove off and faced no charges. The protester's partaking in the protesting for black lives is clearly the reason why the driver chose to run into the protester, and it appears to be the exact reason why TPD failed to do their job. TPD again failed to do their job this summer when their own social media coordinator released the personal information of a private citizen on a video sharing site in retaliation after that citizen posted a video of officers pulling guns on her and a friend during a traffic stop. No arrests have been made, no firing has happened, and the citizen was forced to move homes and faces threats to her and her family's lives. Why has TPD's Safe Place Initiative stayed quiet in regards to these hate crimes? Does TPD need thirteen million more dollars to make an arrest or learn how to not break laws? Is that the level of efficiency we're working with here? Council members, thank you for listening to my comments today. Please do not misinterpret my words as disrespect. We're law-abiding taxpayers demanding that the public servants, whose salaries are funded by our tax dollars, be held to a standard, a standard that no honorable, honest law enforcement officer would have any reason to oppose. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Next speaker we have is Rozelle Coffey.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening, council. I would like to highlight the urgency for a feasible study into hiring trained mental health experts and social workers to respond to mental health-related or social welfare calls. Several councilmen have shown interest in a study like this, and I believe now is the best time to start. With the budget right in front of us, I know we can fit this ask of the public. Just last week, the mayor's task force highlighted this exact need in a finding as a result to the study. We must take advantage of this momentum, and I urge each councilman to support each other in this ask of the people together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Rachel Howell. If you can hear me, please unmute your line.
All right, go ahead.
Hello. Thank you for your time today. Again, my name is Rachel Howell, and I want to echo the sentiments and the asks of my fellow citizens today. And I hope that the council is keeping an open mind in realizing that the people are just asking for some change to occur. Clearly, the public is upset, and I feel like the council should take that into consideration. But my ask today is to echo the call for a study into the need for a non-police force to respond to non-criminal actions. I know that, like Rozelle said, certain councilmen have expressed that this is something they can get behind and support, and I urge all councilmen to hopefully support this as well. As previously mentioned, this is one of the findings that was posted by Dr. Brianna Fox from the mayor's task force on policing that just finished. I believe her exact words were, for her recommendation is to, quote, "hire trained mental health experts and social workers to corespond to mental health or social welfare calls." And I wholeheartedly agree with this, and I definitely believe this should be the end goal. But today, my focus is to make sure that funds in the twenty-twenty-one budget are secured to fund a study to analyze the possible benefits of implementing this proposed change. So please, please, consider funding for the study as we work towards a better and safer police force for both the cops and Tampa Bay citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Matthew Yampowski. If you can hear me, please unmute your line.
Go ahead.
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, we can. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Great, thank you. I'd like to start off with, just to echo everybody else. We're demanding to freeze the Tampa Police Department's budget immediately and reallocate no less than nineteen percent of that budget to community safety programs staffed and run by working-class community members. We're also demanding to, you reduce the jail population by reducing arrests for non-violent misdemeanors. Others have said by fifty percent, but I think that's ridiculous as well, that you guys are populating the jail at all with any misdemeanor charge, especially when the Tampa Police Department has clearly picked and... Tampa Police Department has clearly picked and chosen which misdemeanors to arrest individuals for. We're also demanding to end anti-protest police violence and activist targeting, which has been clear, and at the direction of current Police Chief Dugan, which brings me to my final point. This all can't be brushed under the table, brushed under the rug, like it clearly is being tried to be done. Chief Dugan has to be fired immediately for his actions over the last several months toward peaceful protesters. He's used chemical warfare. He's used rubber bullets on peaceful protesters. He's charged people with felonies. He's charged people with misdemeanors. It's clear that there's like a bias going on here, so his actions are definitely fireable. So we recommend that he be fired immediately. The demand for that reallocation of Tampa Police Department funds would provide approximately thirty-four million dollars that could be used towards programs proven to increase safety and reduce violence. Let's keep in mind that this isn't just about this thirteen million dollar increase. The budget is a hundred-and-sixty-two million dollars. I talked to Mr. Citro's aide a couple days ago, and he literally told me that homelessness isn't the city's problem, quote-unquote. He told me that homelessness is not the city's problem, that's a county problem. Maybe we could, maybe it should be a city problem when a hundred-and-sixty-two million dollars goes to the Tampa Police Department, and now we're giving them a thirteen percent, a thirteen million dollar raise when only seventeen percent of them even live in Tampa. So you guys want to help the city where your constituents live, maybe we should take some of that a hundred-and-sixty-two million dollars and put it into the community. It's appalling, you know? Citro, I know you're not going to respond, but your aide literally told me that homelessness isn't the city's problem. That is a problem in and of itself. So unless your aide is not speaking for you, you ought to be ashamed, you should be ashamed of yourself if he's speaking for you, Mr. Citro. I-
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead, Mr. Citro.
Thank you very, very much, Mr. Chair. I've had lengthy discussions with my aide, and I have found out that my aide had said nothing to the point of those statements, so I hope the council will disregard the statements that my aide made any of those statements. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Jordana Yampowski. You have three minutes to speak.
Hi, thank you. I'd just like to say that your aide did say that, first of all, and to get on to everything else. You say that the thirteen million dollar raise of an already inflated Tampa Police Department budget is going towards pay raises, which my comrades have already said, we are already over the national average and the average of many other cities in Florida, so I don't understand why we need to do that. It's going towards their healthcare and their pensions, when we have so many people in the city who don't even have healthcare to begin with. We're in a pandemic right now, and I see no, no more than seventy-five percent of your police officers wearing masks in the first place, so they obviously don't care about public health and safety. We could really use this money for so many things. Like I said, so many of my comrades have called in and told you guys so many things already, and I just really hope that you guys listen. I mean, it's a pandemic, and we don't have money for childcare. We don't have money for drug counseling. We have homeless people. We have hungry people. You guys are public servants. You serve us, and we pay for you, and we pay for the police department, and we pay for, we want to be paying for all these other things. We don't want our money to be spent on the police department. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Chair, if I may, one more time, make the statement, if I may, one more time, make the statement that my aide did not say any of this. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Grant Loveren. If you could hear me, you have three minutes.
Hey, thank you. I'd like to start off by saying to Citro, please stop gaslighting us. Hey, Bill, Joseph, John, Orlando, Charlie, Guido, Louis, Grant here. Hope you gentlemen are doing well despite the circumstances. Thank you for considering doing a proper study on how Tampa can keep its citizens safe, but we all know it's not enough. In your city, at Orient Road, one of my friends was beaten, and two of them were molested. I implore you to read the Tampa Bay Times article from August 12th detailing the abuse. And for what? A mural for the LGBT community? This is obvious purposeful intimidation to try and shut down the activist movement. While I was being held in a freezing cell without a shirt, my colleagues witnessed a naked black man in chains begging for the guards to kill him while they made fun of him. This is the reality. We can no longer ignore it. The way the whole situation is being handled feels like an abusive relationship. After terrorizing certain citizens and activists for daring to stand up and fight back, you meet with us and smile and think about maybe changing a little. It's like we have a swollen eye after the latest beating, and you're promising to do the dishes, but probably only if we keep nagging. And you'll definitely respect our boundaries in the bedrooms now, in the bedroom now. Please, please recognize our full humanity and have the respect to fully listen to what we're saying. You were young once. You recognized problems in the world older folks were trying to ignore. That's probably a big part of the reason why you're choosing to serve at least a portion of your community now. Thank you. You put in some solid effort and had plenty of luck along the way, and now sit in your elevated positions. Please use them to enact real positive change. Please don't get complacent because you're comfortable now. Please recognize that the youth of today are adapting to the world, not just for our own personal survival, but for the survival of humanity. Jane has said our voices can be ignored because we are a small vocal minority. Those of us speaking tonight are just privileged enough to fight on behalf of the entire community who is too busy trying to put food on the table. We have hundreds of thousands of people standing with us, and it's only a matter of time before you start hearing more of their voices. We are giving you the solutions, and we don't need any more studies to start changing things drastically. Please have the courage to put forward motions without worrying about the PBA or reelection. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Phil Compton. If you could hear me, you have three minutes.
Hey, good evening. I'm Phil Compton with Sierra Club's Clean Energy for All campaign. I reside in Northeast Seminole Heights in Councilman Maniscalco's district. We support the mayor's budget proposal for funding the new Sustainability and Resilience Officer and for development of the Climate and Equity Action Plan. This plan is absolutely critical for the city's future. But for that plan to achieve a goal of Clean Energy for All, it's essential that we have a funding for a completely inclusive and transparent planning process with policy direction by council ensuring such an approach. It's essential that equity not be used as a trendy buzzword, as we're seeing in some places around the nation, but that it means something real for the many residents now feeling a terrible level of energy burden with bills that run up far beyond their current ability to pay. Due to the impact of the COVID-19 economic crisis, many of our neighbors now face losing their power, as TECO has begun terminating service this week to people who are behind in their bills. To reach a goal of one-hundred percent Clean Energy for All, as the city has begun to plan to do, we need to place improvements in energy efficiency at the forefront as a top priority for our lowest-income residents and our small businesses, who must now pay TECO's largest bills, as this will allow us to reduce our community's overall demand so we can reach the goal of one-hundred percent Clean Energy for Everyone sooner than later. One-hundred-and-sixty-five cities in the United States are now at work developing and implementing their plans, with over two dozen already at one-hundred percent. The way they did this was to make helping everyone lower their power bills the first thing they did. We have plenty of examples and successes to draw from, but we all need to work with a Sustainability and Resilience Officer to make sure the needs of all of our residents are addressed so that we become resilient in a way we are not today due to the terrible economic impact that so many are experiencing today. One-hundred percent Clean Energy means everyone benefits. To figure out how we get there, we need to involve all of our neighborhoods. Thank you for budgeting to carry out such a process for an inclusive planning process that will result in a cleaner, healthier, more resilient, and a more economically just Tampa. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Kent Bailey. If you could hear me, unmute your line. You have three minutes.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Very good. I have a really bad internet out here where I am. I'm living in an area that's not served by high-speed internet. Thankfully, my children are long, long gone out of this house and no longer depending on that lacking service here. And I want to ask you to fully fund a comprehensive climate action and equity plan and express the Sierra Club's support for the Sustainability and Resiliency Office. My name's Kent Bailey. I am chair of the Tampa Bay Sierra Club, and I am speaking on behalf of fourteen thousand members and supporters. I want to remind you that next year, 2021, will be a year of rebuilding of America's economy. There will be a dramatic shift coming in federal budget priorities with a strong emphasis on rebuilding America's aging and obsolete energy infrastructure. The massive federal investments in new projects to rebuild our economy will include many opportunities for cities like Tampa to qualify for new federal grants if we are prepared to respond. I want to remind you that half the distance to renewable energy is covered by improved energy efficiency. I will echo Phil Compton's remarks that renters pay disproportionately high utility bills because they live in extraordinarily inefficient houses. The lower the rent, the higher the electric bill, and that's just not right. We need to weatherize and renovate our rental stock. Doing so will accomplish two purposes. It will provide good-paying jobs. It will also make for a more just economy by allowing those people who can afford it less to have more reasonable utility bills. The plans that will be coming forward next year will be designed by the federal government to address the century's most critical challenge, solving the climate crisis, but it will also be providing new, good-paying jobs for those people who most need work. It is a golden opportunity to address one of the most pressing issues, climate change, by creating opportunities, economic opportunities, for people who just need a little space to provide themselves and their families with a decent income. Tampa can be one of the cities that most benefits from the new programs if we act now. Provide the funds-
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Next speaker is Stephen Lidle.
And does he have something to show? Do you have something to show on screen, sir?
We do, yep.
All right.
Thank you, council, for the opportunity to be here tonight and speak with you. Many of you know I serve as president of the South Seminole Heights Civic Association, and I am here representing our community today. Currently, the South Seminole Heights Civic Association and neighbors are advocating for about a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars in funding in the fiscal year 21 city budget to be allocated for the completion of the Hyalinear Park Shoreline Restoration Project. Some pictures of this park and project accompany this presentation, so you can look through that as we discuss kind of where we're at with this project. But the project, which was first presented to the neighborhood about four years ago and many times since, was largely funded by grants and set expectations that included erosion mitigation with a rock wall the length of our twenty-two-hundred-foot park, shoreline restoration consisting of filling in majorly eroded shoreline to the rock wall, removing invasive species where we had overgrown and blocked views of the river, replanning indigenous plant species along the shoreline, cleaning and restoring the natural swell that flows through the park, which we were told, imagine what Ulele Spring Restoration looked like, and that would be the end result, and a replacement for the bridge that sits washed up on the shoreline along Hyalinear. And we also were told about a kayak launch for neighbors to enter the water safely. As you can imagine, when you hear all those things, our neighbors were very excited, and we usually anticipated the start and eventual completion of the project. However, the vision that we were sold and would actually happen are very far from similar. Our association was told that the RFP was released, the bids came back in excess of the expectation, both due to economic conditions and city policy changes. Since the grant funding was time-bound or would be lost, the city determined the best course of action would be to piecemeal the project to allow for portions of it to be completed. So the end result was it got broken into two phases, the north end of the park and the south end of the park. However, even then, only portions of the first phase were completed, and we were happy to see the north end of the park receive the rock well to mitigate the major wakes from boats coming off of plane. That was primarily the source of erosion issues. We were very thankful for that. We were helpful with the invasive plants, and even our neighbors chipped in and volunteered to help with the new plannings. But that's all that's happened. We currently stare at a moat between a rock wall and the eroded shoreline because funding did not permit shoreline restoration, only the erosion mitigation. That moat's now basically a trash collector between the river and the shoreline, and neighbors are faced with cleaning the parks ourselves, since the litter gathers quickly, especially during heavy rains. We are seeing that trees continue to fall into the river as a result of the erosion. The south end of the park remains untouched, and the north end remains partially completed. And according to city staff in an email, we were told that there are no plans to fund the remainder of the project. The last comment was a bit of a shocker to our neighborhood and our neighbors, because as amazing as this project was presented to us, it's actually kind of an embarrassing project as the city executed. Our neighbors expected and deserved better, and as a result, our neighborhood has stepped up and began applying from grants from the Tampa Bay Estuary Program, Environmental Protection and Regional Planning Council, and even Mosaic for some private grants. But we can't guarantee that, especially in today's economic conditions. So what we're doing is, we've done a good job of working with departments, but it doesn't seem like this is an opportunity since there's no funding, and we need genuine leadership to hear our pleas and requests. So we're asking for you to advocate a hundred-and-thirty-five, or allocate a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand in funding for the Hyalinear Park Shoreline Restoration Project in this fiscal year. It's not a want, it's really a need, along with the wake zoning, and we're really thinking that's fair, and if the theme is to truly lift up local, I think this is an opportunity. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Lidle. I have the chief of staff, and I have the CFO here to address Hyalinear Park here in the shoreline restoration. Mr. Chief of Staff, if you'd like to respond to that.
Thank you, Chairman. Just want to point out that following the public comment, which is much appreciated first for the appreciation of a living shoreline, as you know, Mayor Castor, one of her five strategic focuses, areas, is sustainability and resilience, to the point that one of the biggest hires we had this past fiscal year was that officer in Whit Raymer, who is going to be very focused on these type of projects. Number two, thank you for acknowledging the phased approach, and yes, we're also disappointed that the project came back at a different number than expected, and I have the chief financial officer here. The third element of that is we are bolstering our grants positions, and Mr. Raymer in my office, who works directly for me in the sustainability and resilience area, part of the reason he was selected, he's been a champion on grants. The grants program, I think Mr. Rojero can testify to, is going to be over eighty million dollars. I'm not saying that there's a direct pipeline of a grant to this project, but I will say that if you were told there wasn't funding, we want to build some hope into that model, and we will seek it, because these are the type of projects the mayor is very interested in. Dennis, do you want to augment that?
Thank you, sir. Yes, as the chief of staff said, we've got a very ambitious grant program of over eighty million dollars. Of course, that doesn't mean we're going to get all eighty million, but we are very aggressive, and as the chief of staff said, we bolstered our grant staff. That in conjunction with the Sustainability and Resiliency Officer, we're very, very positive, and we have high hopes we're going to bring in a lot of grant funding, and if it's applicable to this project, that would be wonderful.
All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you. Do we have any other public comment at this time, Madam Clerk?
Chair, that would conclude the live public comments. I do want to note that we have three, actually four, members that signed up, which was Chris Vila, El Corso, Peach Alister, and Debbie King that did not log on, and we can move forward with the public comment recordings if you like.
And how many do you have? I count ten, I believe. You're just going to run them all the way through?
Correct.
All right. Go ahead if you'd like to begin.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amber Lipak. My address is twenty-nine oh five North Twenty-Fourth Street, here in Tampa, Ebor. I'm calling specifically at the city council to not allow TPD to have an increased budget this year, specifically to freeze their budget, and instead reallocate nineteen percent, it would be thirty-four million dollars, it's in honor of Juneteenth, to community safety programs. That's four million to mental health, which is completely separate from TPD's control. which is completely separate from TPD's control, for violence reduction programs, another four million, and anything that's left in fund should go to a Tampa jobs program. That we have people in my neighborhood who are so at risk and are so much need, and the police receiving a budget increase is not the solution for that. Having more programs and better funding our programs in our city to help support my neighbors is what we need right now. I feel like we've gotten a lot of lip service instead of actual progress towards making our community safer and working in harmony with our police officers. I'm not for defunding the police specifically or abolishing the police. I'm for reallocating funds to properly support our community instead of our police force. I appreciate your guidance. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brooke Arret, and I'm the Florida Organizer with Sudo Water Action and Sudo Water Watch, speaking on behalf of our nearly twenty-seven hundred Tampa resident members for the five P M. Budget and, uh, capital improvement hearing on Thursday, September fifth, at five P M. Um, I'm concerned with the continued violence the Black community faces in Tampa. I'm concerned at how we've treated our most vulnerable citizens as second class or of unimportance. It is time to bring Tampa into the future, and that is why I support refunding the community and prioritizing new programs in Tampa as alternatives to failed policing and to invest in growing the health and well-being of our community overall. Tampa is at a crossroads where the intersection of climate change, racial injustice, and air pollution-driven pandemic have never been more apparent. Our Black and Brown communities already struggling with police violence and economic insecurity are the same folks who are most impacted by climate change, the COVID-nineteen pandemic, utility shut-off, and lack of access to essential programs. Immediate action is needed to protect our most vulnerable populations from climate and environmental injustice, and it is time to reinvest in our communities to ensure the future of Tampa. The longer we allow climate injustice to reign in Tampa along with other forms of injustice, the longer we are labeling those residents who are struggling as disposable. No one is disposable. Only a swift transition will protect the health, safety, and well-being of our frontline communities. A transition that provides programs for all Tampa residents, not just homeowners. A transition that invests in the infrastructure of the most heavily impacted neighborhoods. A transition that expands strong family-sustaining opportunities and jobs in that transition. The commitment for a just and equitable move to one hundred percent clean energy is to ensure accountability and community involvement. Our frontline low-income Black and Brown communities must not only be included in the process, they must lead it. Only through collaboration between City Council and the mayor's office will we ensure that a transparent, just, swift, and equitable transition made to one hundred percent clean energy by twenty-thirty. Tampa is one of the ten most vulnerable cities in the world. We are posed with a leader to a swift and just transition to a sustainable and resilient future for all citizens, and that is why we must support the line item in the budget for a climate action and equity plan to provide funding for a collaboration be one hundred, and that is why we must support the line item in the budget for a climate action and equity plan, equity, to provide funding for a collaboration between City Council and the mayor's office for just and equitable transition to one hundred percent clean.
Hi, my name is Charlie. I live in Forest Hills, and I am calling in regards to the proposed budget for twenty-twenty-one. Um, I am confused as to why the mayor feels it's important to increase police funding by thirteen million dollars, considering by the state's own data, Hillsborough County is experiencing fewer violent and nonviolent crimes. I am confused why the thirteen million dollars is necessary when, when you call the police, um, in regards to helping the people who are experiencing homelessness and might be in need of some sort of care. Their response is to just let them, this is something that I heard from a police officer, um, just let them die. We really don't want them to, we really don't want to do anything about them. It's better if we just let them die. So we need thirteen million dollars for more compassion like that, or the fact that people like Sadie Dean, a upstanding citizen who works with the Black Lives Matter protesters, and is a community advocate who is trying to raise money for a community garden to be established for the food deserts in Tampa Bay, that someone like that was targeted by Tampa police and was taken from her home and switched into different vehicles and harassed. Um, I don't think it's appropriate to give them thirteen million dollars more for, for such harassment. I don't think it's appropriate, considering during the Republican National, National Convention several years ago, they turned Tampa into a police state, and all the local businesses who bought extra food in order to, uh, help out the, the attendees of the Republican National businesses ate that loss. So now we are going to overpolice Tampa, again, despite the fact that we have an increase in population, a decrease in crime. Make it make sense. It does not make sense. We, the citizens of this city, do not want to turn into a police state. It is not right. It is not fair, and it doesn't make any sense. So please do not vote for a thirteen million dollar increase. Allocate nineteen percent of that to organizations and community services that are benefiting the people who live here and not policing them, overpolicing them, and killing them and harassing them. Thank you very much.
My name is Cynthia Few. My residence is forty-five zero six North Twenty-Ninth Street, Tampa, Florida, three-three-six-ten. I am the president of Belmont Heights and College Hill Neighborhood Association. The association requested a pause walk and signal at Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard and Twenty-Sixth Street on August of twenty-sixteen. And this address or this road, the street, is in front of the Seabright Andrew Library, which is used for a voting fight sometimes, and I received an email saying that, from Gina Torres, Executive Planner for FDOT, on seven-twenty-three of twenty-twenty. And Gina said that the plan had been completed and transferred to the city of Tampa's, uh, engineer, Brandon Campbell. And when I spoke to Mr. Campbell, he said that, uh, the project wouldn't be completed until early spring of twenty-twenty-one. Now, our citizens and my community pay taxes like everybody else, and we want to be proactive instead of reactive when somebody gets hit and hurt or killed on the highway. So please let us know why it's taken five years for this project to be completed. Thank you.
My name is Diana Shanks, and I live in Bayshore. I am commenting on the budget for the five P M. Meeting. First of all, I reject Mayor Jane Castor's thirteen million dollar increase to the police budget. I support divesting at least thirty-four million from the proposed TPD budget and reinvesting in other forms of TPD spending. I would like to see a feasibility study for programs separate from TPD, such as Kahoot from Eugene, Oregon, or the Richmond Office of Neighborhood Safety. The community has already been surveyed, and we are calling for universal childcare programs that can help working parents achieve quality care. I'm calling for at least four million dollars to be allocated to a community ran and staffed mental health response team, at least eleven million dollars into an equitable housing program, and another eleven million dollars into a city jobs program that gainfully employs marginalized and criminalized residents. Thank you.
My name is Nancy Naddelson. I live at six-zero-four West Tilda Street, Tampa, three-three-six-zero-three, and I'm calling about the public hearing on the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one annual budget and capital improvement program budget, and I'm calling to, um, to advocate that the funding for the completion of the Hyalineer Park Restoration Project be approved. Uh, the project has begun, but it was not finished as was promised, and, um, it's really quite unsightly and also dangerous to leave, uh, the, the shoreline, um, unfinished as it is. It's still eroding, and, uh, there's some water that's collecting and standing there still, and, uh, lots of trash and debris are collected in that, uh, standing water. So please, um, please have that, uh, remaining a hundred and thirty-five thousand, uh, approved to finish the restoration of the Hyalineer Park. Thank you very much for your consideration. Bye-bye.
Hello, this is Nicole Tyerna. Uh, I live at three-one-zero-one Burden Court, uh, off of Bayshore. Uh, I want to comment on the five P M. Budget Hearing. Um, I reject Mayor Castor's thirteen million dollar increase to the police budget. I feel that we should divest thirty-four million from the proposed budget for TPD and reinvest in different community safety. I'd like to see a study on the programs that are working in other cities, such as Kahoot in Eugene, Oregon, uh, or the Richmond Office of Neighborhood Safety. Um, you know, the community has already been surveyed, and we're looking for universal childcare programs to help working parents. Uh, at least four million should be allocated to community, uh, ran and staffed mental health teams, and eleven million into an equitable housing program, and another eleven million into a city jobs program that gainfully employs marginalized and criminalized residents. Thank you for your time. Bye.
Good afternoon, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the annual budget. My name is Rock Walker. Uh, I live at eight thousand, eight thousand and two North Highland Avenue. I am a senior at those for High School and Ivy Program. I'm here today to talk about the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one annual budget. Uh, I'm here today to propose the creation of the Youth Budget Review Commission. The purpose of this commission is to provide an opportunity for students and youth to express their ideas and opinions in the form of recommendations from the city budget. As I'm sure you have all witnessed, student activism has, has become increasingly more prominent, not only within our community, but throughout the country. This is an opportunity for Tampa to lead this initiative and get ahead of the curve. This commission provides the means in which students can have their voices heard, encourage community engagement, and help develop future civic leaders. These soon-to-be-voting high school seniors represent the future of this city. Encouraging engagement at this young age is a positive way to facilitate campus growth as a cultural and economic hotspot, as well as a politically and socially engaged community. This commission represents an incredible step in furthering your already active efforts and engaging with current and future constituents. Now, I'd like to discuss the logistics for this commission. First off, what I'm proposing would not require any city funding, just time and effort. I'm recommending that, that the commission be composed of eight high school students in their senior year, one from each public high school within the city of Tampa. The selection of these high school board members should be decided by appointment from the seven city council members and the mayor, with each government official being responsible for one high school. The selection process should be up to each official. Board members will serve a term of one year and will be selected in the fall of each year. The commission should meet during the middle of this fiscal year to conduct a review of the current fiscal budget and to produce recommendations for the next fiscal year budget. I've emailed each city council member an outline of what I'm proposing, along with my contact information, in case you have any questions and discuss future actions so this proposal be implemented. Again, I would like to reiterate, this is an excellent opportunity for city government to encourage civic responsibility at an early stage. Let Tampa be a model of an engaged community. Please implement this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Samantha Shepherd, and my address is twelve-ten East Giddens Avenue, zip code three-three-six-zero-three, Tampa, Florida. My comment is for the September third five P M. Evening Budget Hearing under file number C M two-zero-dash-six-four-three-seven-three. Police officers are an integral part of how we perceive the functioning of our society. We are taught from an early age that they keep us safe by enforcing our laws, and if it weren't for police officers, there would be complete and total chaos. However, all of this is a lie. We quite literally do not need police officers. All of this propaganda makes us believe that we must accept that sometimes they will be too violent, and, you know, sometimes they will murder people, but there are alternatives. We don't need to live with this. The propaganda that we are inundated with prevents us from imagining alternatives. Some say that not having police would hurt victims of violence, but as a survivor of intimate partner violence myself, I completely disagree. In two thousand and fourteen, I called the police after my abuser physically assaulted me. The police arrived forty-five minutes after I called, and my abuser was already gone. Police do not prevent violence. They usually show up after violence has already taken place, and in many other circumstances, police often escalate violence and harm, or even murder violent victims. I got a restraining order against my abuser, and he was arrested for breaking it shortly after he received it. The peace of mind I received, knowing that my abuser couldn't harm me while he was in jail, was priceless. However, police in prisons were not necessary for keeping me safe. Members of the community could have helped guard my apartment to ensure my abuser couldn't hurt me. A team of trained community members could have responded to my nine-one-one call, where they would have actually showed up in time to separate my abuser from me and prevent further violence from happening to me. And I'm sure Tampa activists have even better ideas to add on to this list. The Tampa Police Department budget should be frozen, and nineteen percent of the said budget should be reallocated to community safety programs like the ones I listed above, the programs that make police obsolete. The punishment for a crime should not include contracting a deadly virus, which is cruel and unusual punishment. The jail population should be reduced by halting unnecessary arrests for low-level crimes. The Tampa Police Department needs to stop inflicting violence on Tampa's citizens, exercising their right to publicly protest, and they need to stop. We do not buy into the lie that activists deserve the silence. Police Chief Dugan needs to be fired immediately, and it will be a disgrace if the city does not comply with these demands. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Anderson. I'm a resident of Tampa and commenting for the budget hearing September third at five P M. The summer has presented inequities that have been glaring to marginalized peoples, especially Black communities, for much longer. Perhaps indicative of our country, our city has not been exempt, but we can be an example. For matters and results that hardly warrant a historic increase, I propose City Council will respect our neighbors that would be and are already most impacted by an already bloated public safety or police budget. Respect our neighbors enough to keep the current budget, but redirect nineteen percent of the proposed budget toward restorative community and safety programs, such as mental health services, like a response team, jobs programs, housing and childcare for at-risk populations. Such issues are most likely the root of much criminalized behavior, and addressing them rather than punishing the symptoms would be a sign of an effective and humane people. Thank you.
Chair, that concludes our public comment recordings, and I just want to remind everyone that no one appeared at the Tampa Convention Center, and that concludes the public comment portion of this item.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I appreciate, uh, all your help and your work. Um, now we go to any questions or comments, uh, by city council members.
Mr. Chair.
Is that Councilman Carlson? Go ahead, sir.
Yeah. Um, is, is, uh, Chief Bennett still there?
Yes, he is.
Um, Chief Bennett, you, you've, uh, you and the mayor received the, the emails that we've received, and also you've heard the public comments that we've heard. Um, the, the people who have spoken, um, weeks ago asked us to, by email and in person, asked us to, to deduct a hundred and sixty-two million from the police budget. Um, now they're asking us to, um, instead, uh, just not increase it by thirteen million. Um, does the administration have a response to that?
We do. Uh, thank you, uh, Councilman Carlson, John Bennett, Chief of Staff. Um, the response- The response was embedded in the, the, the budget presentation. Obviously, when we conveyed that to council and the public, that there is no intention to defund the police department. The city is looking to, through the major strategic plan, to make sure that a lot of those social items that we have seen in the neighborhoods and the community for years and years, bring those to fruition through housing affordability, the ability to have mobility options, if you will, transportation, infrastructure, and of course workforce development, all wrapped around the, the, the opportunities with our, our financial capabilities and responsibilities. So I had actually looked over the last decade of, of the T P D funding and the officers per capita have created a, a natural trajectory of rightsizing the agency. And, you know, I know that a lot of the community may not understand the value of the crime reduction. But I have estimated with the help of the Budget Office that rightsizing the agency from back in the, in the early two thousands officers per capita actually are now below the recommended I C M A levels for the national standard from where they were. And it, it's close to attributing to somewhere between twenty-two and forty-eight million dollars of cost avoidance to the community, while a city is well below the statewide crime rate and well super below, over fifty percent below, the major cities in the state. As a matter of fact, today, the cities that were shown this morning, I did a quick analysis just based on efficiency, effectiveness, and equity. And our crime rate was fifty-eight percent below the average of those cities that were shown. So I know that we looked at this holistically.
Could I just ask you, sorry for where the chair cuts us both off. Could I just ask you, what, what would happen if the council approved the budget without the thirteen million dollar increase?
Well, they, you know, speaking from a contractual perspective is that contract was negotiated and approved by council. You know, what the feedback that I get from the Budget Office and the Chief Financial Officer is that we have a, a known trajectory, which is good for planning. And so that money would still have to happen. If it wasn't approved, you know, the, the question that always come up is where do you take services from when you have a police department that is, you know, largely personnel, very lean in operating costs and, you know, performing? So the risk factors, you know, start to, to leak into the neighborhood, if you will.
And then the, there was a specific program, and I don't remember the name of it, but you were talking about social services. There was a specific program that, that the public was recommending just now. Have you heard of that program? Do you know if we're, if the city is looking into it at all, or a program like that? Do you remember that it was like a mental health services program?
Yeah, thank you, Councilman, for that. As you know, Mayor Castor has held multiple tiered workshops over the last couple of months. And the recommendations came out recently through the findings of that workshop. And if Chief Dugan or Chief Burkall are on the phone, I would turn that over to them because they were doing the research on that.
This is Chief Burkall here. I can respond. All right, so I'll go ahead. Good evening, Council. The Tampa Police Department is in the process of conducting extensive research on mental health, a co-responder approach. And we'll be working with U S F on developing information for a request for information to the community as far as engaging our stakeholders. With me this evening, I have Detective Tony Scolaris, who's assisting us with the research and I'll give him the floor real quick to briefly highlight our research.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Tony Scolaris, Tampa Police. On the topic of mental health, we're finding our research with focus and emphasis on looking at best practice to assist those in need. We have two cities that we're looking at, Houston and Dallas, Texas. Both have mental health teams that are yielding, yielding positive outcomes. And by way of those outcomes, we're seeing emergency room admissions being reduced along with arrests. We know in mental health, excuse me, one in five adults experience a mental health condition every year. One in twenty adults experience or live with a serious mental health condition. And specific to the city of Tampa, we're answering six thousand calls a year related specifically to mental, mental health relations. Overall, our officers here have forty hours of C I T or crisis intervention training. We have a group of officers whom have specialized training in that field. And we want to approach this co-responder model through evidence-based practices by way of implementing a mental health pilot program. This would allow us to work with our stakeholders and continue studying the issue. By incorporating mental health clinicians, our vision would be to work with those mental health clinicians, again, reaching out to those individuals in need of services. Right now, we're in the process of an R F I with stakeholders to obtain evidence-based related data that would help us with this cause. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for that, Mr. Chair. One, one more question to Chief Bennett, please. This morning, the, the Budget Committee Chair spoke and I haven't had a chance to deeply study his presentation and maybe you haven't yet either. But it seems like there continue to be questions about contract services, how they're allocated in the budget. This morning, we uncovered another contract where there, there was only one bidder and it didn't hit the minority participation level. I wonder if it's possible, I mean, city council has audit authority, but I wonder if it's possible maybe for, for the administration to do not an audit, which would just check the processes, but look at the, the purchases. Last time when we did, and when you all did an analysis, it was the, it was the, the other department, not contract services. But it seems like there continue to be a lot of questions about contract services and how, how contracts are let and also the, the amount and budgets for each of those. I wonder if it's possible that the administration could do a study of it and then if some, if maybe after the budget is approved, if, if some savings are identified, either by advertising R A Ps more, encouraging more companies to respond so that we get lower prices or by, by not outsourcing as much. I wonder if we could decide to reduce the budget at some point after that agreement and then, or after that study and then put the money into the general fund reserve for future year.
Again, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Carlson, for, for those thoughts. We are more than happy as an administration to consistently look over this. And I don't, I don't want to convey that, you know, I'm going to give you feedback that needs to be put into a structured process. I know that from looking at the slides this morning, again, as quickly as you did, that we're willing to pull back with the committee as discussed by Councilman Goode and look through things and see where we can identify efficiencies consistently in the process. How that relates to the, the expansion and contraction of contracts and the equal business opportunity has been something in our foresight for the year that I've been here. You know, and I talked about it earlier, about reorganizing the city, getting the strategic plan. And I know that we have talked with most councilmen offline about the trajectory that the mayor has us heading for these kind of things. So we more than welcome an opportunity to, to look deeper and see where we could repurpose money for different things as needed. But we also want to be mindful, as we said earlier, of having a sustainable organization when it comes to our personnel and using the opportunities for contract, contract management to create opportunities in the community for entrepreneurship and to fulfill our procurement and our contract options for the city and also make sure that we are a good, strong employer of, of our frontline services to make sure that there's minimal to no risk to those career paths. So happy to look for the sweet spot in that described.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
In Vera, after, after Dingfelder Vera, if I may. Thank you, sir.
So we'll go Dingfelder, Vera. Who else would like to speak?
Goode.
All right, anybody else?
Councilman Goode.
All right, so we'll go Dingfelder, Vera, Goode. Go ahead, Councilman Dingfelder.
You know, I have to say, I'm like, I'm like some other years in the past that I've been involved with. This budget year and this budget process has been inspiring in terms of public participation. And I say, I say that because in years past, nobody would show up. I think that having the ability to be able to call in and leave messages, and we had to do that because of COVID, has, has brought a lot more folks out to be able to participate easily from the comfort of their own living room. So I don't want us to forget this in, in years out, in the future years, that we should leave, leave that opportunity open to the public to be able to either call in or video in at their, at their convenience. So that's just an aside. Substantively, I wanted to bring up a couple of points and, and they're not my points. They're the points of the community that's spoken to us. And I'm, and ultimately, when we're all done, I'm going to, I'm going to make three motions. Let me, let me just talk about them now so everybody else can, can express their feelings. For one thing, I've been hearing about that Haya Linear Park or Haya, Haya Linear Park, I'm not sure how you say it, H A Y A, up near the M L K Bridge. And I've, I've heard that the city made promises and then we didn't fulfill them. And that's not good. I mean, I, I understand when things come in over budget, then you got to cut back, yada, yada, yada. But when we have a budget, a total citywide budget of one point two five billion dollars and we can't finish a project for an extra one hundred and thirty-five thousand, then something's wrong. So my first motion is going to be to, to request that the administration, between first hearing and second hearing of the budget, identify one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars specifically in more toward the Haya Park. I won't do it right now, Mr. Chairman. I'll wait my turn. But that's going to be, that will be, that's the intent of that one. Councilman Goode, I'm not going to make a motion about that crosswalk at, at the Andrews Library because it sounds to me like you already got that one under control. So that was second on my list. The third one on my list is, really came up as a result of the Budget Advisory Committee. And I think year in and year out, we hear, we hear the Budget Advisory Committee say that there's lots of opportunity to save money and they give us examples and this and that, and we say, thank you very much. We'll see you next year. But it dawned on me in looking at the charter. Well, I didn't even ask if you guys could hear me. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, sir.
Looking at the charter, section two point zero four says as follows. The city council shall have, has as its staff the following, who shall be responsible with the city council through the chair of the council. A, budget analyst. The city council is authorized to employ a budget analyst to or an individual with similar qualifications pursuant to the city's Position Classification Code to assist in budgetary matters of the city council. The city council by ordinance shall define the qualifications, pay, and responsibilities of said employee in accordance with the city's Position Classification Code. Now, Mr. Helby and I were talking about that about an hour ago. I was asking about that provision. I believe Ms. Capine was looking into that provision several years ago. So I will follow in her, in her very large footsteps. But my next motion, when we get to motions, is going to be to allocate one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars toward the, to, to retain a, a city council budget analyst. Week in and week out, Bill Carlson and, and the rest of us, we have money questions. I'm not an accountant. I don't think anybody, and I, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think any of the seven of us are accountants or budget analysts or anything like that. We're just well-meaning citizens who step up to the plate to take this job. I think we need a professional to help us, to help us with the W M B issues, to help us, you know, with the day-to-day, week in and week out questions that we have about money and departments and saving money and things like that. So that's going to be my next motion. And my last motion comes from numerous citizens who have, who have been asking us to do something different and do something better in our community, specifically as related to mental health. And, and I was so thrilled on Saturday morning that the U S F professor that, that was brought on by the mayor, Professor Brianna Fox, her seventeenth recommendations, last but not least, said as follows. She recommended, she recommends that we hire trained mental health experts and social workers to co respond to mental health-related or social welfare calls. And that's based upon evidence, evidence-based best practices that have been going on around the country for decades. In Eugene, Oregon, Bill Carlson, the, the program they talked about was the Kahoots Program, C A H O O T S, which is an acronym for something. The Kahoots Program in Eugene, Oregon, has been going on for thirty years. And it's very successful. That's not even a co-responder. They, that Kahoots Program handles twenty percent of their nine one one calls. And, and it sounds to me like a fantastic program. It only costs Eugene and Springfield two point one million dollars. Apparently, it looks like Eugene Springfield is about half the size of our city. But anyway, it cost them two point one million dollars. And, and I think it, it's very doable. I'm glad to hear, and I've had several conversations with Chief Burkall and Chief Bennett about this issue. I know the mayor is on board with this issue, but I want council to help a little bit. What I want council to do, and then my third motion, is going to be to, to, between now and, and two weeks from now, to ask the, the administration to come up with a million dollars. And I'm not saying where it should come from. Okay, I will leave that up to the administration. They've got a hundred budget analysts who can figure out where to get the money from. To come up with one million dollars to fund a mental health program to work hand in hand with T P D. I believe now's the time. St. Petersburg has already done it. Orlando's already done it. Pasco County's already done it. As Chief Burkall mentioned, it's happening all over the country. It's been happening in Houston and Dallas and other places. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to second guess them and tell them how to do it. But we are the budget, we are the, we are the council. We, it's our budget. That's what we're told. That's what the charter says. So we can help them along by putting it in the budget. And then when they figure out what program they want to do, the money will already be there. So in regard to the environmental folks, Phil Compton, my good friend Phil Compton and Kent Bailey, guys, I know the environment and sustainability has taken a backseat to COVID right now. And I, and I'm not saying it's not important. Those are important issues. I'm just afraid that, that we might have to put them off for a little bit. So I don't have a motion in response to, to, to the environmental guys. But anyway, Mr. Chair, after everybody speaks, if you could get back to me on those three motions, I appreciate it greatly.
Mr. Dingfelder, I just wanted to ask that when you do make your motion regarding Haya Linear, I'd like to second that. I'd like to hand the gavel to Councilman Citro because it is in my district and I know South Seminole Heights Neighborhood Association, Steve Lidle had requested that. And again, being that it's, it is in my district and I've been in communication with them regarding this. So I just want to put that out there. Thank you very much. Councilman Viero.
Hold on one second. One other thing. Yes, I, I will always try my best to defer to the district councilman because I've been there. And I will, please take the gavel and make the motion. I will.
No, 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 you, no, you do it. You brought it up. No, no, it's okay. You're the, you're the guy that, that lives there.
Well.
You know, near there.
I don't live right there, so I don't want anybody to get the wrong idea. We do live about.
Yeah, yeah, you know, nearby. All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Viero.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. Just a couple of thoughts on the budget. You know, Councilman Dingfelder made some motions. I'll, I'll, I'll be. you know, uh, Councilman Ding Felder made some motions. I'll, I'll, I'll be uh, uh, you know, positive on, to varying degrees on, on much of it. I guess I'll, I'll, I'll address that uh, when it, when it comes forward uh, and whatnot. You know, one thing I wanted to point out about this budget, and I've said this before, but I'll emphasize it again tonight, is how disability-friendly this budget is. You know, under the last administration, uh, we had the City of Tampa Autism Friendly Program, uh, which sought to make a number of services throughout the City of Tampa uh, autism and sensory friendly. One of the first of municipalities in the state of Florida, I believe, uh, to, to do that, a, a landmark idea, a great idea. Um, this budget goes further with two big endeavors. Uh, first, uh, an autism park in the new Tampa area, something I've pushed for since I, I got here in our first budget in 2017 for fiscal year 2018. Um, and also an East Tampa All Abilities Park. This is huge, a multimillion-dollar recreational commitment to people with disabilities, whether it's intellectual disabilities, autism, physical disabilities, whatever it may be. Uh, thi- this is a really big deal. Uh, just last night, I, I did a, a Facebook Live discussion with a wonderful disability activist, Karen Clay, her son, uh, Brian, uh, uh, about the late Mike Phillips. You know, things like this really go a long way. We talk about the community. There's a big community out there of people with special needs, of moms and dads, siblings like me, my brothers mentally disabled. And, and for them, things like this, they mean the world. I mean, i- these things really mean a lot to this community. If you're out there raising a kid with Down Syndrome, autism, cerebral palsy, whatever it may be, or you yourself have disabilities, gestures like this tell people that you belong and that you're part of the family of Tampa. So I, I, I wanted to commend the Castor Administration and all members of council that I know are strong supporters of this. Everybody has always been uh, very strong supporters of this issue, uh, but for leading the way on this issue. This is a moral issue. It's a big deal. Um, on, on public safety, uh, this, this budget also goes a long way as well. It continues to fund the investments that we made earlier this year in East Tampa with a, with a fire truck and North Tampa for Station 13 with a fire truck. And most importantly, something that's a really big deal. This is the genesis of a new fire station, 24 in North Tampa. Something that is just, you know, I, I visit a lot of fire stations. And whenever I visit the men and women at Station 13, the busiest station in all of the city of Tampa, one of the top 50, 60 busiest stations in the United States of America, in, in a number of, of studies, they're really tired and worn out. Getting a study for a, a new fire station goes a really, really long way. Um, uh, you know, I proposed talking about a master plan for public safety, uh, uh, so we can look at all of our city and be proactive and not reactive. Um, and then this is a budget that meets people where they are. You know, like I've said before, people are hurting right now. We have unemployment that has skyrocketed three times. It's tripled in the last, what, five, six months or so. Unemployment has tripled. Small businesses have been decimated, some disappearing. And this is a budget that, that helps to meet people where they are. I support that. You know, a, a lot's been said in public comment regarding uh, the police and, and, and uh, community relations with law enforcement. I, I again wanna review the things that, just briefly, that council has worked with the administration on and some things that the administration has done unilaterally. Uh, you, you take a look at the changes we're making in our civilian review board. Um, there, there's one or two small issues that may be in dispute. But you take a look at the things that we've agreed on. Getting the CRB involved earlier with investigatory uh, uh, powers, getting the CRB involved more so in, in policy advisory roles with regards to hiring, et cetera. That's a really big deal. Big changes on policy. We saw yesterday the changes on uh, no-knock warrants. Really big deal. Ban on chokeholds, a duty to intervene. Uh, we're talking about implicit bias training, something that I know we all support. Uh, Councilman Citro, Carlson and Goode's pushed that on our um, uh, Charter Review Commission. And then body cameras. I think it is 8 million dollars for body cameras. Uh, and in this budget, we're making big investments in East Tampa. 18 million dollars in recreational uh, uh, investments in East Tampa. We continue to march forward with our uh, uh, plans for investment in the North Tampa area, including the USF Bush Valley area. And, and we're doing this in the middle of a pandemic. I mean, I, I recently heard that between a third to 40% of City of Tampa workers have been out because of COVID at one time or another. I believe that statistic. Uh, but it's been a rather high number, a very high number. And these things have been done in the midst of the pandemic. That's pretty darn remarkable. I'm not patting ourselves on the back because we got a lot of work to do, uh, to finish the job. But I, I think that's certainly something to be positive on. You know, on the police budget, I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Rojero on it uh, on this exact statistics, but I've read that between 85 to 90% of the police budget goes to personnel costs. That means healthcare, uh, that we know have doubled. Or strike that, not doubled, gone up 50% or so in the last eight to nine years. Uh, that means pensions. That's the pension. That means salaries for officers who begin, if they're new, I think it is a 54, 55,000 dollars a year. Um, so certainly, you know, I, I, I've talked to a lot of people. I've had a lot of dialogue with a lot of the activist community. We make common ground where we can, and we disagree respectfully uh, where we disagree. But one thing that I always say about proposals to cut the police budget by 19% or for whatever it may be, I always say that you're trying to fit a size 50 waist and size 34 pants. It's not gonna fit. Um, I, I, I'm not one to support uh, uh, cuts like that in public safety. I've been very clear on that since day one. Uh, if you wanna invest in social spending, you'll have no greater friend than me. I'm a big fan of, of the power of government to improve the general welfare and the lives of, of everyday Americans. But there's a, there's a proper way to do it. Um, but just wanted to make those comments, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll address uh, questions on the motion, uh, the motions uh, when they're forthcoming. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, next up, we have Councilmember Goode. Do any other councilmembers wish to speak after Councilmember Goode?
I'll speak.
Uh, Councilman, okay, let's do Citro and then uh, Miranda. Go ahead, Councilman Goode.
Good day for leadership this evening, Mr. Chairman. You know, there are a lot of decisions that happen to be made in our city on a daily basis. I can say that this council has made great strides for our community. A lot of things that our community has asked for. I know there are, there are tough times right now dealing with a lot of police issues. But I can say I've served on that side before. And there are good times and there are bad times. Everything is not perfect in the police department. Just like any other job, it's not always perfect. But I, I heard the mayor's points yesterday with, with Chief Dubin. And I, I think that with the group of people that came together in her task force to talk about the, the issues, I think it came away with a lot of good information. I believe that if you look at what our citizens are talking about, we have to listen to them. I always say, don't say what you can't do, what you can do. We may not be able to tap into that police budget because I, I truly believe, I know, but most of that money comes for pensions, healthcare, and officer salaries. I remember back in 1998, when I first came on, Mr. Chairman, I was a victim of possibly being further laid off myself. It was a budget crisis. I had to wait before I got assigned to a, a unit because uh, of the financial difficulties. I finally got that opportunity to get sworn in and be able to get a job where others did. Uh, there were some furloughs and some uh, people that were rolled back. They called it rolling back positions. So I understand it. I understand that, you know, cutting a 19% into a police budget, I can tell you, a lot of officers have families. I can tell you, cutting a budget and someone being fired, that brings on added stress, which you know, officers already have stress. And I see a lot of issues that could be brought on by cutting that number of officers from a police agency. So I'm not in favor of that, we're defunding. I think maybe down the route, down the road, you can look at reallocating things and doing some other budgetary uh, issues. But just cutting police, I just, I just, I'm not in favor of that. But I'm in favor of the community safety programs that people talk about. I had a conversation with Mr. Hero and uh, Mr. Bennett in reference to uh, finding out where we can find something to do a program. I heard the mayor talk yesterday in reference to uh, finding money for the young lady, Miss uh, USF to study, continue to study and, and bring back some ideas on how we can get some mental health programs and safety programs. I didn't hear the detective talk about the CAHOOTS program. That's something that the community is asking for. They, they keep talking about it. They've done their research and their studies too. So we have to uh, look at what they're talking about as well and, and as a part of the research. See if that's a viable program that could work here. You know, it, again, we, we can't discredit the people who pay taxes here. We, we must listen to them as well. I've taken so many calls and been on so many Zoom calls, and I've been upfront with my constituents. And some may not be my constituents, but I've been upfront with them all to tell them how I feel about the police budget. Been upfront to tell them how I feel about safety programs and mental health. I think, uh, Mr. Ding Felder, that we've gotta find a way, even on the police budget, of course, but find a way to find some dollars to look at this mental health program. I believe that the mayor said she was in some of the local uh, athletic clubs that were gonna, some money to continue the studies. Uh, hopefully that's gonna be a feasibility study to see what, what can be done. But again, also to, to look at uh, what can work uh, in our communities and our police agencies. You know, I've been blessed the last couple of years, Mr. Chairman, that I've got some things for East Tampa. Well, District 5 in general, things that we need. We have a long way to go still. But I'm thankful for the administration to always compromise with me, work with me. And again, uh, don't say what you can do, what you can do. So I'm, I'm, I'm happy with some of the things that have come to my district. We need, we still got a lot of work to go. But I, I am in agreements uh, in reference to uh, the analysts. We, we talk about that every week with, with, with these high dollars that come in. Uh, and I think there's something missing somewhere. Don't know what it is. I think, Mr. Ding Felder is on to something. I think the presentation by the budget group, I was here last year. The, the group did a fine job, but I think this year, it was a little more detailed. It made our eyebrows flinch up. It made us turn our heads a little bit to look and uh, some councilmembers asked more questions, whereas last year we didn't ask any questions to the budget committee. That just says that citizens are getting involved and that we're choosing the right folks to be on these committees. I always believe, Mr. Chairman, that you should not just have people, because they're a good friend, uh, to be on a committee. You should have people that are knowledgeable to be on committees of the subject matter. And that way you can dissect what is going on. You get true value where everyone involved. I just wanna say that, again, uh, I can support some of these measures. I, I, again, uh, again, I would not ever support a defunding of a police agency. Being on the other side, I know how critical it is. Again, we do have some challenges. I think with some of the plans that are gonna be in place by uh, Mayor Castor and the administration and reference to policing, I think you might, we're gonna see a difference in, in that avenue. I yield back, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Goode. Next up is Councilmember Citro, and then Councilmember Miranda. Councilman Citro, go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the staff, Mr. Rojero, um, and Chief Bennett for uh, presenting this and giving us insight. Uh, I will keep a very quick, Mr. Chair. Uh, when I was campaigning, and I saw all the other council uh, members out during the campaigns, and I gave a very important promise. And that was the ATU, the Amalgamated Transit Union. And I gave them my promise that I will not allow any city workers' jobs to be cut. And I'm sure this budget will help me keep that promise. Uh, Mr. Chair and, and staff, I am just gonna have very two requests. Uh, we have two television networks uh, that are funded. Excuse me, that I want to be funded, uh, help funded by the City of Tampa. One is the Tampa Bay Community Network. The other is the Tampa Bay Arts and Entertainment Network. They're one of the last bastions of free unbiased speech. And they help uh, deliver arts, entertainment, news, and other resources to our citizens in the city of Tampa. And I would like to ask for a 108,000 dollar uh, uh, budget item in our uh, in our budget for each, each. Um, and again, thank you, staff, for your report. And I echo the comments that all of my fellow council members have made so far. We will weather through this. And I thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, sir. Councilman Miranda, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it very much. Uh, like yourself, uh, Mr. Chairman and uh, Councilmember of District 3, Mr. Ding Felder. I've also started the process on the Nazo High of linear park restoration project. I, I received information from Brandon Moore, from Eugenia Ismael Glova, from Carl, Carla, excuse me, Linkard, uh, from Sarah Sutsman, and from Elizabeth Mitchell, just to name a few. And I was starting that process to meet with different individuals in budgeting uh, next week. Uh, but I appreciate the concerted effort of the neighborhood, especially Mr. Lidle, who's done a yeoman's job, not only in his neighborhood, but also serving in the position that he does, overviewing the budget. And uh, regarding the action that was taken by certain council members, Mr. Viero, Mr. Goode's, I will also say that uh, defunding the police is not in my immediate plans. I, I think that we have to look forward uh, to the mental health crisis as one that's exploding all over the country. And I guess it's a, uh, and I'm not an expert in it, so I'm just taking a guess. It's a combination of many things that goes on in, in life. And especially at a young age, uh, you see things around and you, you can't comprehend why and how and when, and it's very sensitive at that age, and not only at that age, at any age. And uh, what I'm trying to express is that maybe uh, this council and this mayor ought to talk to other governments that are in very close proximity that we also pay taxes to, and I'm not saying they should be involved in pain. They should at least review it, see if they can help the City of Tampa, since we have about close to 400,000 people in the city who live within the county of Hillsborough County. And uh, I, I hope that uh, if we can get something started here, that the commissioners, who are very able of doing their job and very good at their work, can also do the same thing if they don't already have one. I already don't know if they do or not. But, and the mental health is something that is very needed, uh, not only in this city, not only in this state, but it's a great country that we live in. And I'm all forward to helping that, but I'm also cognizant of the fact that you must have some type of force, not force and force of use, but police force, like in areas to participate, enough police officers to have what is needed in a city of this size. And at one time, we were like one of top two in the whole state as far as racial. And I think now we slipped a little bit, but I understand that uh, to be for other purposes also. So I, I'm thinking that uh, I will be supporting the budget, uh, as I see it, along with some adjustments to it. Uh, especially I'm talking about the budgets of the police department. I'm not talking about the whole budget of operating and so forth and so on. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much for letting me speak. I appreciate it very much, and I look forward to continuing this process.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Miranda. Does anybody else have any comments? I think we went through everyone. I, we did. I um, I'm not gonna add anything else because what needed to be said has been said by a variety of council members. And I appreciate um, what you've said, what you've brought up, and the discussion. Before we move forward with any um, any motions, I have uh, our attorney, Morris Massey here, who'd like to uh, speak.
Yeah, real quick, City Council, obviously, it's your prerogative to make motions, uh, to make changes to the budget tonight. However, typically, what, how we have dealt with those motions in the past then is that um, if these motions, these proposed changes to the budget are acceptable to the administration, there is not a change made to the budget between first and second reading. Instead, what, how these, these changes are effectuated are by budget amendments that are uh, brought to council in early October after the budget is uh, approved. And I just wanted to make that clear for the record and make sure that that, we've worked through it that way. Um, so, that's it.
Uh, we have the Chief of Staff as well, Chief Bennett.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, to Councilman Ding Felder and Chairman Maniscalco, regarding the motion suggested between you and, and possibly the rest of council about the living shoreline. The request would be to make the motion to find the right amount of money to complete the project as opposed to the, the dollar amount that is uh, has been talked about. I'm not sure that that dollar amount is the right amount to finish the project. It might be under that, meaning the, the, if you pick a number, it might be below the target. And in sidebar-ing with Mr. Rojero, uh, it may be beneficial that the motion is made to find the dollar amount to complete the phase, which may be more than what is, is being asked for. And then we will work offline diligently and to Mr. Massey's discussion, uh, build that process for a, a post-adoption amendment.
All right. Unless there's anything else, I'd like to go ahead and close the public comment portion of the budget. Mr. O'Hara?
Will the Finance Chair please make a motion to adopt the tentative millage rate?
Councilman Miranda?
Yeah, the motion, we have some other items unless you want me to go to that right now. I will. That's move to tentatively adopted proposed millage rate of 6.2076 mils, which is 5.58% more than the rollback millage rate of 5.879 mils for property tax funds, which are used to support the general fund operating budget of the city of Tampa.
Second, Citro?
We have a second from Councilman Citro. If there's no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Question on the motion.
Go ahead, Councilman Dingfelder.
Motion sounds pretty straightforward. Mr. Mas, yeah, Morris. Passing this motion has no impact on our ability to amend or address the issues, the three issues that I wanted to address. Is that correct? Is that the next motion?
You're correct. You're correct, Councilman Dingfelder. It's just setting the millage rate. It's the tentative millage rate that you're setting. So the motions that you would want to make are changes to the actual budget itself. So you'd make those before we have the first reading of the budget, I think.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Roll call vote for this tentative millage.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. Before we go to the first reading of adopting the budget, I think this would be the proper time to take motions from council members. Councilman Carlson, you were the first to speak, and then I'll go to Dingfelder, Viera, Goode, Miranda, Citro, and Miranda in that order for whomever has motions. So, Councilman Carlson, if you have any motions at this time.
No, I don't. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilman Dingfelder, you're next, sir. If you have any motions, now is the time to make them.
Okay. Well, let's start with a simple one, Mr. Chairman. I'd like you to pass the gavel and make a motion on the High Line Park.
All right. Then I pass the gavel to Chair Pro Tem Citro. And that motion would be to allocate the $135,000 for... I'm sorry, $135,000 or the amount necessary for the High Linear Park restoration that we had discussed. Councilman Citro, I made that motion.
I'll second that.
Councilman Citro, you have the gavel.
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. You've heard a motion made by Councilman Maniscalco, seconded by Councilman Dingfelder. Roll call vote, please.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes. And I guess the clarification is that the administration, as Mr. Massey indicated, I guess the administration will come back with that as a budget amendment.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. In October, we will come back with a budget amendment in the first city council meeting in October.
Mr. Chairman, is that your intent?
Yes, sir. That's fine.
All right. I vote yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I hand the gavel back.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dingfelder, you have, do you have anything else, sir?
Yes. Two others. In regard to the mental health issue that we've spoken to at length, and I appreciate Detective Sclaire and his research, and Chief Burkall and his research. The community has done a huge amount of research. I've done a fair amount of research. I think that we are ripe for a mental health unit in our community. I actually used to be in mental health court over at the courthouse with our chief judge, and they're doing a great job, but I think this will be a benefit to that effort as well. So with that said, I'd like to request, and I think we need a response back from Mr. Bennett on this, request that the administration is amenable to a million-dollar budget item to help the administration and TPD work out a program for mental health, either responders or co-responders for this coming year. And I'd ask, and that's my motion, and I'll just leave it hanging there for a second and ask Mr. Bennett to speak to it before I look for a second.
Go ahead, sir. Go ahead. Chief Bennett?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Councilman Dingfelder. I know, as we've all heard, that the administration is heading toward this progress, as you mentioned. And as we've discussed, Mayor Castor is committed to those findings that were a part of the community effort and USF. I'm a little, not on the dollar amount as a target. I just, you know, hearing this and listening to some of the initial research. And again, it's not that it's a million, it's not that it's 500,000, it's not that it's more than even that. It's allowing the RFI to find the right balance between the call load, the level of service, the efficacy of the program. I just don't know how to give you a response on a million-dollar placeholder in lieu of a commitment that the administration is looking at this, willing to do the RFI, and find the right level of service for the community to progress us where we need to go. But I welcome feedback on that comment first.
Okay. So I think we're, as usual, Mr. Bennett, we're on the same page. The administration wants to do something. The community is desperate for us to do something and to act. I don't know how the rest of council feels, but I know personally, I think this, I know this is the right thing to do. And so I, you know, the number, the million-dollar number is rather arbitrary. And frankly, if the administration and TPD concludes that working with a vendor, a mental health vendor, you can do this for 750,000, or you can do this for 500,000, there's nothing that says that you have to spend the whole million by any means. And you guys, and you guys are well aware of that. There are lots of things in that budget that are budgeted higher than ultimately we spend. So, you know, that's the intent of my motion. It's to give you guys a lot of flexibility and give you guys tremendous motivation and say, this community and this council is behind this to the tune of a million dollars a year, and that's significant. And that's where I'm coming from, Chief Bennett.
I'll second that.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. No, thank you, Councilman Dingfelder. And you are correct. We are on that trajectory. We are going to do the RFI. I know that the administration is committed to funding this once we find the right configuration and the best practice or evidence-based model. We know that mental health is not going away. We heard the numbers. I've been familiar with those numbers from my research. We know the cost for service loads. And I know that we'll find the right dollar amount to fulfill this. Give me one second as I confer with the CFO.
Chairman, can I say something while I'm conferring?
Go ahead, Councilman Miranda.
Thank you. What I want to do is try to broker things because we have a CRA meeting, I believe, next week, don't we?
Yes, sir. Next Thursday is CRA at 9:00 AM.
But it'd be possible, legally possible, if we get this. And after the CRA, we convene as the city council and bring this up at that time then so we can get some type of a dollar amount instead of doing up the cuff. This is not prudent information that we just say, well, we have a million-dollar floating here. Let's take it. It's supposed to be a budget that is tight. It's supposed to be a budget that is sincere. It's supposed to be a budget that is accurate, and I'm not throwing any stones at anyone. But I like to see us do it in a mannerism where we meet after the CRA and at least administration has a week to discuss this among themselves and try to figure out the huddle. This is not a football game when you clap and you go do a play. It's about giving the service to the taxpayer, but also being frugal and understanding that the budget is supposed to be balanced. And I want to say it again. I hope that I'm wrong, but the problems of this country are not coming this year, or maybe not next year, but they will in 2022.
So, Councilman Miranda, what you're saying is after next Thursday's CRA meeting on September 10th, you would like a special call meeting to allow the administration to have about a week to look over this and then come back to us, and where we discuss it then? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I think it's only fair, not only fair to Mr. Dingfelder, but also fair to, and his second, also fair to the administration so they can come, at least have a week to understand what's going on and where the money coming from.
I would be happy to support that. Any other council members have anything to say on that?
Viera, if I may?
Councilman Viera?
Thank you for that, Mr. Chair. No, I agree with Councilman Miranda. Well, first off, let's start off, you know, saluting Councilman Dingfelder for his leadership on this issue of mental health. You know, this is something that we read about a lot with regards to public safety challenges. We hear a lot about that from so many different diverse parts of the community. So we thank Councilman Dingfelder for his leadership. I do agree that putting a set number on it would probably not be wise because we don't know what, you know, it'll fit, what numbers will be needed for this. But, yeah, I would agree with that idea that we, you know, should forward some sort of an idea. Councilman Dingfelder talked about, you know, having mental health professionals maybe come along with police officers, et cetera. I obviously want a commitment, and I think all seven of us agree with this, that these funds will not come out of the public safety budget. I don't, I know that's not the intent, obviously, but just putting that out there, obviously. You know, and actually, this month, September is actually Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. A big issue not for all the community, including for our first responders. I know in U-Tampa, I'm not too far from the TV Review Memorial Street sign. Mr. Leview was a retired firefighter who suffered from PTSD and took his own life. He was a gentleman who came from a good family of first responders, police officers, firefighters. And Tampa always mourns him. But mental health is a huge issue. I salute our friend, Councilman Dingfelder, for leading on this issue. But with those specifications, I think it can be done right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Goode, go ahead, sir.
I mean, I can support Mr. Miranda's motion if it comes on the floor in reference to that. I think he's right. But I support Mr. Dingfelder's motion in reference to mental health. It is very important. But again, I'm hoping that if we do that, we also make sure that we look at that CAHOES program. The community is strongly advocating and asking about that program. So I want to make sure that we do take a look at those numbers with that CAHOES program. I yield back, sir.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any comments or questions? Councilman Dingfelder, being that this is your motion, would you be willing to make a motion for a special call meeting, let's say, next Thursday? I don't know how long CRA is going to go, so a special call meeting for 1:00 PM of the Tampa City Council to further discuss this and therefore giving the administration more time to look into it?
Yeah, absolutely. In regard to the, to the time of day, perhaps Mr. Massey or Mr. Shelby can help us on that. We might want to schedule it for, you know, 9:05, so that way we can hold it anytime the CRA is done. But listen, I do want some advice from Mr. Massey in regard to procedurally, you know, where this goes. Because let's say next Thursday, the administration comes back and says, you know, we think we can do this program for, you know, I'm going to just pull a number, say $50,000. And so obviously, my vision, or the vision of the community, as it's been spoken to, which is more important than my vision, is a big program, you know, a robust program. And if the administration says they want to do 50,000, and I'm going to stick with the million, then how do we resolve any of that type of conflict between now, next Thursday, and the final budget here, hearing, Mr. Massey?
Obviously, I mean, it's your budget right now. I mean, you can make changes to the budget and make motions to change the budget. Obviously, the mayor has the opportunity to veto, I think, I believe, line items. She has that authority. And so, I mean, that's how it would play out, I think, legally. I mean, it's a little, I mean, typically, we do not have a continuation of a hearing, a budget hearing at a date other than it's been published or noticed as a budget hearing. That's the one thing that troubles me a little bit about next Thursday's discussion. But I do think, I understand the need for the administration to go back and look and see what they think is a viable way to respond to it. We could obviously provide an informational, I think the administration can provide an informational type of report back to council before the 16th about where they believe is the correct level to fund that effort and what they would be agreeable to as an amendment to the budget in October. I think it's what I would recommend, how we would go there. Go ahead, Chair.
Mr. O'Hara?
Mr. Miranda?
Thank you, Chair. This is Dennis. Just to latch on to what Mr. Massey said. You know, when we come back, regardless of the dollar amount, we would be affecting this change in fiscal year '21 as opposed to adopting the fiscal year '21 budget. In other words, it won't change the adoption of this budget. We'll be bringing you an amendment after October 1st to change the budget you've already adopted.
Okay. And I think what, Councilman Dingfelder, I won't speak for you, but I do, he had budgets approved on the 16th, kind of where we were headed to in the mid...
Okay, understood. And Councilman Dingfelder, this is John Bennett. The only other point I wanted to make is that a lot of the research still needs to go forward. The RFI needs to go forward. But I have, I've done a lot of social or public health programs with high utilizers in mental health. And what I have seen in our RFPs, RFQs, and working with the local, state, and federal levels of jurisdiction is that sometimes these things get co-funded as well. And that's why I was hopeful that the RFI would get us to the right deliverable and then the commitment of both, you know, the administration working with city council to get the right level of service, the right funding mix, and most importantly, satisfy the community's concerns, as the mayor has shared herself. That was the reason that I was a little leery about the dollar amount and more committed to the programmatic aspect.
Okay. Well, so based upon all that, Mr. Miranda, I appreciate your mediation skills. And I agree with what I'm hearing. I'll modify my motion to be just a special call meeting on this issue. Obviously, we can't take a vote, a budgetary vote at that meeting. But we can, we can listen to the administration on this issue. That would be next Thursday. We would request the administration to report back to us about a viable mental health program and the costs associated with it and the timing associated with it. And then, and then I'll withhold any permanent motion on the budget till the final budget hearing.
I think that's fine.
Okay. So my motion, very quickly, right this second, is going to be...
Wait, who is that? Is that Goode? Oh, Mr. Shelby, go ahead.
Questions from Mr. Massey, just in terms of process. If, without predicting what's going to happen at the special call meeting, first of all, does that mean we would go forward with the first reading tonight?
Yes, we'd have to go forward with the first reading tonight. Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, the question is, if city councils wanted to make a change based on what happens next week, can they do that at the second reading and then recess that, but still adopt the budget before October 1st?
I believe so. Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's an amendment to the, we would, I believe what, how this would play out, Mr. Shelby, is that we would still adopt the budget as it's currently been provided to the city council on September 16th. What we are talking about realistically, really, is what type of budget amendment will the administration come forward with in October to deal with the mental health aspect that Councilman Dingfelder has raised? And I think what, and city council wants to know that answer before they approve the budget that's presented on September 16th.
Okay. The concern that I have, obviously, is pursuant to the charter. Once the budget is adopted, the city council loses authority to bring back budget amendments without the mayor's action. So that's why I just want to be able to... So that's why I just want to be able to make sure that they're informed as to the process because the way it's going forward now, which has always been a collaborative process, is there really is no budget passed over the mayor's objection and perhaps even a veto. And the question is, I guess, council historically has worked with the administration to avoid that process. But with this open-ended question, the question is, what is council's ability to act before the, to effectuate a change to the recommended budget before it is adopted, before the, you know, legal deadline for adopting a budget? You understand my question?
I believe so. I mean, you, obviously, we can do it. I mean, historically, the way we have dealt with the budget is as you have described it, Mr. Shelby, we've done it in a cooperative manner. What council has typically, or almost has historically done, has approved the budget as presented by the major, by the mayor. There have been a discussion like last year when we were talking about it, funding for Al Barnes Park, for instance. That was not approved as part of the budget that was approved in September. It came back as a budget amendment. And so how this process has worked is really how I've described, is that before the final vote is taken on the budget as presented by the mayor, that the motions that have been brought up by city council about the changes they would like to be made to that budget, the administration responds to those. And if they respond favorably and they make a commitment to move forward with a budget amendment in October, the council has historically approved the budget. The right, there's no legal, I mean, if the mayor wanted to say, "No, I'm not going to do that", the city council cannot legally force her to do so. But there are, the city council has a lot of other tools in its toolbox and historically, and this is how it's happened, you know, for years and years and years, the mayor has always then come forward with the proposed budget amendment at the first city council meeting after the budget is adopted in October. And part of the reason for this is that in order to effectuate the changes to the budget before it's approved, it would force, I think, staff to revise and reprint the entire budget and that's a huge exercise. So that's really the reasoning behind it. So hopefully that helps.
Mr. Chairman, nice to meet you.
Councilman Miranda.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. You know, I've always said trust and verify. And I trust Mr. Bennett. I trust Mr. Dinkfelder. I trust his counsel and I trust the mayor. And how verifiable is that last year, the same thing, remember there was an item, I think, of $100,000 on an ambulance? Remember that deal? From New Tampa? It went and it was passed and then later on, we made a budget amendment to give $100,000 later on to fund the ambulance that was going to be put in New Tampa, if I recall. Maybe a couple of dollars off, but those items are worked on. It's not a day-to-day operation. And no mayor is going to tell you yes on something if they're, you got any sense of intelligence. And then every time they want to change from one, changing money from one to another, the council is going to tell them no. So I mean, it's just, we're not, we're getting too many attorneys and too many opinions and we're going to end up like Washington, DC.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Dinkfelder.
Colonel Carlson.
Oh, Carlson, go ahead.
I'd like to be in the floor at some point. I just wanted to say, this Carlson, I just wanted to say that I think that Chief Bennett is well-versed in these areas and I'm certain that he will take a hard and authentic look at this issue. I put out a second, by the way, depending on what the motion is. But the other thing besides, Marty mentioned the legal aspects of who has power under the charter, but there has to be some level of trust. But the other force out there we should remember is there are quite a few members of the community who have asked for us to relook at the police. And in the absence of reducing any police budget, this is the number, this is the biggest recommendation that they made. And so I think if we somehow are unable to put this in place, we will hear about it over and over again from the public. So I think it's in all of our best interest and the community's interest for us to do a really good job at this and we could potentially save lives and potentially save money and save stress of our first responders. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Dinkfelder, I know this would be your motion, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah, a lot of good wisdom out there and I agree. I've been working with John Bennett off and on for 20 years. So I'm good with that. As Mr. Miranda said, I trust, I trust him. I think if there was strong resistance, I might trust a little less, but I'm not feeling that resistance. It just sounds like they need a little bit more time. So let's see what they have to say next Thursday. My motion on this issue will be to schedule a special call meeting immediately following the CRA meeting to discuss the mental health issues and the mental health opportunities in the budget.
We need a set time for that. It could be 10, 11, whatever you wish, but we need a time for that special call.
Why don't we just say 10 o'clock and obviously whenever CRA ends, we'll start this.
That works.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Second, Carlson.
Second from Councilman Miranda, I believe I heard first.
Give it to Carlson.
All right. Okay, Carlson with a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vera.
Yes.
Goode.
Yes.
Dinkfelder.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously.
Councilman Dinkfelder, you had one more motion to make?
Yes, sir. And my last motion is as related to the powers that are specifically authorized to city council under the Charter, Section 2.04. I won't read them again, but I would, I would request that we ask the administration to identify $125,000 in the budget and they can do it as a budget amendment as long as, I don't, as long as they're willing to agree to it tonight to fund a budget analyst position that would specifically answer the city council and the city council chair. And that's what the Charter says, 2.04. I say $125,000. That's probably a little bit more than it's going to take. And I don't know that we necessarily need an employee. It might be a part-time, half-time contract position. I'm not really sure. We can work out those details. In addition, the Charter says that we're supposed to do this by ordinance, but obviously, we're not doing any ordinances tonight. So at a later date, after we get it budgeted, we'll come back and ask the city attorney, Mr. Shelby, to draft the appropriate ordinance. But so my motion, my motion very simply, my motion very simply tonight would be pursuant to city charter 2.04 that we budget $125,000 for a city council budget analyst.
All right, we have a second from, a motion from Councilman Dinkfelder, second from Councilmember Goode.
May I speak?
Councilman Miranda has, yes, sir.
Thank you very much. I understand what Mr. Dinkfelder is trying to do. I have worked with a budget analyst and without a budget analyst. And I'm not going to support the motion because I think that this council is capable of doing what we've done every year. And that we have a fantastic committee headed by, Mr. Goode's a person, the opponent, the chairman there, Johnson. And it's, we're doing such a great job. And I think that spending $125,000 could help even more on the mental side than hiring somebody here and comes in once a week or once every two weeks or whatever. If you go be an outside and not be a council employee, be a contract employee, I guess. So that's the only reason I'm doing it. I think there's other needs in the city that are much more pressing than just a council analyst. And that's why I'm reluctant not to spend that amount of money. There's some help that could be put somewhere else. Thank you, though.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Councilman Vera, yes, sir.
Can I respond real quick, just since I'm the mayor?
Let's get Vera to speak and then I'll go right to you, sir, Dinkfelder. Go ahead, Councilman Vera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, before, I'm not inclined to support this, but let me say before, I just want to make sure I say this. We just forwarded a mental health change in the city, which was because of Councilman Dinkfelder. I salute his leadership tonight 110%. I say that because I just, you know, I'm not going to be supporting this. However, however, I just want to emphasize that, that my head is off to Councilman Dinkfelder for his leadership on that mental health issue. I just, I just think that's so darn important and I just wanted to just put that out there a second time. With this, I respectfully suggest that this is a want, not necessarily a need at this time. You know, we have the Citizens Budget Advisory Board. We have various tools. And on top of that, I'm also going to bring something else up, which is we are working with the Castor administration, which we've been here for a year and a half or so. And, you know, they've been extremely accessible, very accessible. John Bennett is just about the nicest man in the city of Tampa or in Florida, okay? Very, very accessible. Again, I would respectfully suggest this is a great idea. This is something that can go forward, but it's a want, not a need. That's where I fall on it. But again, I thank our friend Councilman Dinkfelder for his leadership tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, could I respond to Mr. Miranda?
Yes, sir. Councilman Dinkfelder, then Chief Bennett is here and he's going to, would like to speak. Go ahead, Councilman Dinkfelder.
Thank you. Mr. Miranda and Mr. Vera, both, it's ironic that you both make reference to the budget committee because this afternoon I got a call from several members of the budget committee, including its chairman. And they specifically asked and suggested and recommended that we hire a full-time budget analyst. It's their recommendation. And you know what? In regard to money, Mr. Vera, and I respect you tremendously for, you know, the autism part that's being proposed, you know, for significant amount of money and that sort of thing. The, sometimes it takes money to make money. And sometimes it takes an outside set of eyes to be able to point out issues to the administration and say, "Hey, you guys have done this this way forever, but maybe you can do it a different way." And that's one of the reasons that we have separation of powers also in the Charter that says city council, you are the watchdog. You need to have oversight over the city administration. It's not reflective on how we feel about Jane Castor or John Bennett or any of them. It's just doing our public job, doing our duty to be the second branch of government in the city, and a very important one. So that's where I'm coming from. This is not a new idea. Ms. Alcena talked about it years ago. Ms. Kapine talked about it years ago. It sounds to me like Mr. Miranda actually had it in a prior administration many, many years ago. So this is not a new thing and we can work out the details later. But my motion, again, is just to set aside $125,000 for that position. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chief Bennett.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to make a comment to council as you're talking about this amongst the councilmen is that mayor had approved, and this is part of our enterprise performance management. Again, just a comment, the mayor approved us to go into the Open Gov platform, both for our performance measurement towards the public and our internal services, but also importantly, to have a level of self-service and transparency with the budget. It's a tool that I'm very familiar with in a budget that was double the size of the city of Tampa's, where you have the ability to do your own manipulation of the budget. It almost makes you an instant analyst. I just want to mention that that is in play. And from my understanding is we should be up and running by the early second quarter fiscal year. Again, just a comment.
Thank you very much. All right, is there any other discussion on this motion?
Mr. Chair.
Who is, who is that? Carlson, go ahead.
Just, I will support this because I think it's necessary to have an extra set of eyes and a trained set of eyes to look at the numbers. I thought that the analysis done by the volunteer committee was very thorough this morning, but I think also they're not experts on this. And not being experts, they come to us with a presentation and then, and we also don't have very much time to respond to it. I think they want, I talked to several of them today too, they want to research this and get more deeply involved in the budget going forward. But it'd be helpful to have an expert look at it and be involved. And maybe it would cost a lot less than $120,000. I hope it will cost a lot less. But probably for $20,000 or $30,000, we can get a part-time person to look over it. But we need our own expert, just like we get legal advice, we need our own expert to look at it. And I'll mention a couple examples of why. On the CRA side, we learned a couple months ago that there were reserve accounts that were being labeled as interest. And we, in looking at it, any reasonable person would think that that was just interest. But in fact, it was a reserve account that was being held and we didn't find out about it until somebody wanted to use the money. And I don't think this was something that this administration did, but it was pretty shocking to me. And then we know that in the last administration, that several city council members said that they were in, before Julian Lane Park was approved, they were not told that there were big balloon payments due from 1998. And so even though we trust Mr. Bennett implicitly, Mr. Harrow, the mayor, I think it's good for us to have our own person so that we know exactly what's in all the numbers. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilman Goode.
We have a charter and the charter allows a certain things. At this point, it allows for an analyst. Again, I guess everybody received calls from the budget committee today. And some of the recommendations that they made made sense. You know, having folks on that committee who know business, who know finance is very important. And it helps out in the process. So I will be supporting Mr. Dinkfelder's motion for the analyst.
Thank you very much. Anybody else before we take a vote? Councilman Dinkfelder made the motion. Who was the-
Oh, and one last thing, if I may, Mr. Chair, to the Vera. I think very much, you know, this appears like I think it's going to pass. My big issue is the sticker shock with the number. This is something that comes back and it's a lot less. You know, it's something that I could support. I just have sticker shock over that initial price. But it looks like it's going to pass. But again, and mind you, listen, it's funny. We all do votes where we think one day, "Hey, I'm going to vote for or against this." And then you think later, you're like, "Boy, I was wrong. I remember last year when Mario Nunez and everybody was asking for funds for their station." Personally, I voted no. And guess what? A year later, I go, "Hey, you know what? Probably should have voted for that." My point being that we make decisions with the information that we have and our sentiments at the time. And I have sticker shock. I'll stand by that right now, just on my view, but it looks like it's going to pass. But just giving some statements there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilman Dinkfelder made the motion. Who again was the second?
Goode.
Goode was the second. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Vera.
No.
Goode.
Yes.
Dinkfelder.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
No.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
No.
Miranda.
No.
Motion failed with Vera, Maniscalco, Citro, and Miranda voting no.
Thank you very much. Councilman Dinkfelder, do you have any other motions at this time?
Hold on one second. I'm viewing my scribble here. Nothing else at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Next up is Councilman Vera. If you have any motions at this time.
Thank you, sir. Is this motions with regards to the budget or motions in general?
Motions in regards to the budget. We'll have new business at the end of the, at the end of the-
Okay. I have none. I just thank everybody for their hard work tonight, including the administration. Just great job, everybody, and if I may say so, but nothing at all, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Goode, do you have any motions at this time regarding?
No, sir. I'd just like to let the community know that this council is working hard. We appreciate the things that the administration has brought forth and the hard work they continue to do with us and work with and compromise. I think we can get past this and be able to have a good product at the end result. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Councilman Citro.
Just, I have one motion and it's going to include two. I would like for the fiscal year 2021 budget to- year 2021 budget to reflect funding for the Tampa Bay Community Network and the Tampa Bay Arts and Entertainment Network in the amount of $108,000 each.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Citro. Do we have a second to the motion?
Question on the motion.
Yes, sir, Councilman Dingfelter. Go ahead.
I was after Mr. Citro made that motion, I was I was trying to inquire, I was inquiring Tampa Bay Arts and Entertainment Group, which we had pushed really hard to fund last year. And they are they are being funded on page 160. And I think I confirmed this with Mr. Bennett as well. And but legally, they are called, hold on, they are called 108,000, the Educational Cable Consortium. So Mr. Citro, if you look on page 160 of the budget book under non-departmental detailed general fund, the Educational Cable Consortium is already being funded as proposed by the administration, and we appreciate it, for $108,629. Assuming I assume that's the Tampa Bay Arts and Education Group that you're referring to, Joe?
Chief Bennett, can you can you help me out on this, please?
Yes, sir. John Bennett, Chief of Staff. Councilman Citro, that is correct. The last year, we funded 108,000 to the one network, and we were requested by the other network as well. And just again, more of a comment ahead of the motion, is that we have already had outreach with the network, and we explained our Social Arts and Action Fund that the mayor put in place this year. And despite the COVID challenges, the mayor fully funded the opportunity for those nonprofits to apply for the similar amount that they had in previous years. And what we explained to the network that was seeking funding, which is the one that you're motioning about, is that once all of those applications come in, based on our increased accountability about resources, inputs, outputs, and outcomes, then we would look to allocate funds towards the other nonprofits. And we probably have a queue of maybe five or 10 of those that are outside of what was funded last year, basically saying in lay-speak first right of refusal. So the process is already in play, but I respect the motion and understand where you're heading with it.
Thank you. I'd like to keep my motion as it is.
Okay. The only request I have, Mr. Citro, is to break it in two and tell us more about the second group.
Councilman Dingfelter. Okay, Councilman Citro.
Tell you about the second group. I'm sorry. Is it the community network?
Right.
The community network was set up when cable first came into town, and we're supposed to give the the viewers the opportunity to learn how to create their own shows, produce their own shows, and bring them to the cable network. This is the last question again of this opportunity for the community to do TV shows and to voice their opinions.
May I say something?
Councilman Miranda.
In fact, I know that's a fact because one of our esteemed, one of our great producers and workers here in the city, Frank, who works here in cable, comes from that. He used to work here on North Boulevard 30 years ago, is when I met him, when he was a teenager working there.
That's true, Councilman. This gives people the opportunity to learn the trade of production without actually having to go through higher education to do so. It's been an opportunity for the less fortunate, the the people that can't afford to go to these type of colleges to learn the trade.
All right, any other?
I was I was hoping it might split the motion and make two separate motions so we can we can just vote on one and vote on the other, in case we have different feelings about the two.
Councilman Citro, are you willing to make two separate motions?
I prefer to keep it, but I, you know, I, again, I prefer to keep it this way. But if the rest of the council would like me to split them, I will.
If you wish to get your motion, sir, if you however you wish to do it.
I'd like to keep it the same.
Councilman Goode.
I got a little confused here. On the page, it says 108,000 already for the first with the Arctic, which is classified as another name, correct?
Correct.
We're asking for an additional 108 for that program?
No, I'm asking that these be guaranteed, not that they're put in a queue.
Just because of Chief Bennett, I think, Chief Bennett, you said that right now you've already devised a program for all these nonprofits, correct?
Yes, sir. The the intent going into this fiscal planning cycle was to create a Social Arts and Action Fund, per the mayor, to help the nonprofits that have been previously funded, you know, operate more like a grant program. And then when COVID struck, you know, the mayor was sensitive to those nonprofits that were continuing to struggle, knowing that there was very little relief, knowing that, you know, it seemed obvious that council would support keeping them funded as long as they applied in the in the mechanism that we demonstrated during the budget presentation. And the 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 motion being made on the other network is already inside the CFO's office under this program, and we're waiting for the the applications to settle to see if we could facilitate the request. But as I mentioned earlier, I respect Councilman Citro's motion.
Mr. Chairman, Dingfelter, I just have one last comment.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Obviously, I'm going to support the motion because it includes the Tampa Bay Arts and Entertainment Educational Cable Consortium that's already in the budget for 108. And I don't want anybody to to think all of a sudden we're not supporting them. So I'll support the motion, even though it's it's a two-part motion. But I do find it sort of ironic that that we would have a motion for 100-plus thousand dollars to support, you know, another cable station, but we're not willing to support a budget officer who might be able to save the city millions and millions of dollars. So I just find that a little disappointing. But I will support the motion. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Dingfelter, Carlson, Carlson.
We have to change our voices so we don't sound alike. Just sorry to bring this up to everybody, but you know, the the history on this is that both of them were funded up until two or three years ago. And then the last mayor had a personal grudge against one of the individuals involved with TBAE, and as a result, cut both of their vindictively cut both of their budgets. And last year, what happened is that is that TBAE came to us, and the other one didn't didn't know that there was a chance of getting money, and they're in the process of not doing very well. Both are viable, very good organizations that provide public access to information, and they add to the economy. And and as important, it's correcting a wrong from the past. And so whether we guarantee, quote unquote, guarantee anything into the future, I think to right or wrong, and support two important organizations, that we should at least approve it for this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Citro, you have a motion on the floor. Is there a second to Councilman Citro's motion?
Second. Carlson.
Second from Councilmember Carlson. Let's have a roll call vote.
Vieira.
Yes.
Goode.
Yes.
Dingfelter.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council members.
Councilman Citro, anything else?
Not just not now. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Next up is Councilman Miranda. Do you have any motions at this time, sir?
Yes, sir, if I may read the ordinance for first reading.
Thank you very much, sir. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move an ordinance adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020, and ending September 30, 2021, as presented by the mayor, providing for the levy as provided by law of a tax on all taxable properties in the city of Tampa and fixing the millage within the city, making appropriations in accordance with the provisions of said budget, authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk as the proper authorities of the city of Tampa, Florida, to certify that the property appraiser of Hillsborough County, Florida, the millage should be levied for all purposes for the fiscal year 2021 in the city of Tampa, Florida, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Vieira, second.
We have a second from Councilman Vieira. Unless there's any discussion, roll call vote. Wait, 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 wait. We have Morris Massey has a has something. Go ahead, sir.
I think we should have, before we take a vote on the on the ordinance, we should have a motion on the tentative milit rate first.
We did it. We did it. We did it. We did. All right. We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda with the second from Councilman Vieira. Roll call vote.
Vieira.
Yes.
Goode.
Yes.
Dingfelter.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on September 16, 2020 at 5:01 PM.
Thank you very much. Mr. O'Hara, anything else at this time?
Just, sir, if you will make a motion to adjourn.
Well, before we adjourn, we have we have to receive and file. But if there's any information reports and new business from council members, Councilmember Vieira.
You could adjourn the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, for the sake, I guess, we're going to use the terminology that Mr. O'Hara suggested. Rather than make a motion to close the public hearing, we can adjourn the public hearing but not adjourn the meeting and leave it open for the purpose of information reports and new business. Is that okay with the clerk?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're going to, you said you wanted to adjourn the public meeting, but keep it open where we can still do new business.
Adjourn? Well, let me ask Mr. Mas. Normally, we'd make a motion to close the public hearing, but if we want to use the terminology that's provided.
I think you can go ahead and close the public hearing.
All right, let's make them.
We lost it, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Miranda, I said, if we could get a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda. Do we have a second?
Vieira.
Vieira with the second. Roll call vote.
Vieira.
Yes.
Goode.
Yes.
Dingfelter.
Yes.
Dingfelter.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried with Dingfelter being absent at vote.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Dingfelter's, yes, I just couldn't, I had a technical glitch and I couldn't hear anything.
Okay, correction. Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. We now go to information reports and new businesses, new business by council members. Let's start with Councilman Vieira. Do you have anything at this time, sir?
Yes, sir. Just really fast, I motion for Transportation Department to look into creating a school zone on 40th Street north of Hillsborough in front of Pepin Academies. I was approached by some advocates for those with disabilities, as well as a member of Tampa Police Department. It was Officer Bun, Lisa Bun, regarding this with some safety challenges for the young students over at Pepin Academies, who of course are have special needs there. So I would request that the administration look into that, if I may.
Do you have a date or anything for?
Oh, yeah.
Or to come back?
Yeah, let's do this. What are we in? September? How about we first?
We have October, October.
Let's do the first.
Or November.
First weekend, first week in November's fine.
Just to give everybody.
November 5. All right, do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
I get from Councilman Miranda. Is there any objection to the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Goode, go ahead, sir.
Ms. Vieira, thank you for making that motion. There's a high, high busy intersection. Cars due back up along 40th Street when the schools are letting out. And so thank you for making that motion. And also.
And, all right, and if I may.
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you, Councilman Goode, and thank you for your hard work. And also wanted to say, if I may, just a shout out to Councilman Goode for getting, I think this budget has $18 million in recreational funding for East Tampa, if I recall the number. So just congratulations to Councilman Goode for being a what? A wrecking ball for his district. That's it.
Yep. All right. And I'm glad you mentioned Lisa Bun with TPD. She's one of the best there. So I'm glad her name came up. There is no objection to Councilman Vieira's motion. By unanimous consent, it is passed for November 5. Thank you very much. Anything else, Councilman Vieira?
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Goode, do you have anything at this time?
Nothing serious, sir. Thank you for your leadership this evening.
Thank you very much. Councilman Dingfelter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to council for you listening to my motions. Two things that Mr. Shelby's reminded me is I'd request that the clerk accept on the record my two conflict memos that I filed. This one is RZ 20-50, and the other one is RZ, hold on, 20-61. That's my motion that they be received and filed.
We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Miranda. Any objection? Hearing none. The motion passes unanimously. Anything else, Councilman Dingfelter?
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Carlson, do you have anything at this time?
Yes, sir. On August 27, item number 17 SU220-02, I abstained and I filed my form with the clerk's office today and would like to just make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
We have Councilman Carlson with a second from Councilman Miranda. Any objection? Hearing none. By unanimous consent, it passes. Anything else, Councilman Carlson?
That's it. Thank you, everyone, for tonight.
Thank you very much. Councilman Citro, do you have anything?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. I am happy and pleased that this council could have great dialogue this evening. And it has been a great meeting. Thanks to your leadership, Mr. Chair. Nothing tonight.
Thank you so much. Councilman Miranda.
No, sir, I have nothing directly to say. Just, all right, I want to thank every council member for the diligent work, not today, but every day that they've been elected. I really appreciate working with you.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to receive and file?
Go, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion for receiving file from Councilman Miranda. Do we have a second?
Second. Citro.
Second from Councilman Citro. Any objection? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night.